Right here?
And in the back.
Yeah, well, that's because of this thing, you know. Is it better now? Jesus, that's a problem. Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Town of Milbury Planning Board meeting for February 24th, 2015.
2025.
2025.
2025. I will get my glasses out.
Wow.
Yep.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Notice I got my glasses now?
Oh, you didn't have them on when you were there?
No, I didn't have them on before that.
Good evening. My name is Bruce DeValle, clerk of the planning board. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting. You may participate in person or remotely via computer by going to zoom.us, entering access code 875-1487-9187, or by calling in at 301-715-8592. You can use star six to mute and unmute your phone line. We asked that all speakers, please identify yourselves at the podium each time you speak by stating your name, address, and town of residence for the record. We ask participants in person to use the microphone. Please address all comments through the chair. This is a public meeting and is being broadcast on local access and is being recorded by Milbury, excuse me, Access Cable Television. Available live public access channels, Charter 191 and Verizon 26. Richard Goslin, chairman.
Okay. With that, we can open the meeting. I'd like to call it to water. Would like to slip in the Milbury Housing Plan Production and talk about that first. So that the ladies doesn't have to spend hours in our... Same as she's coming back tomorrow to more, so, you know. Let's see if the Slack burner is nice, huh? This is a test.
All right. Good to be back. Just for the record, my name is Emily Globitz. I'm a principal planner at the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. So I won't give the full presentation that I gave to the board two weeks ago, but I'll just give a quick summary. So tonight, we are seeking adoption by the planning board. And then tomorrow night, the Board of Selectmen for the town's first housing production plan. Just a reminder, this is a five-year strategic plan for helping Milbury plan and meet its housing affordability goals, as well as helping guide decision-making related to the town's housing needs. The document that you've reviewed is the culmination of about a year's worth of work, including monthly housing production plan committee meetings, a community survey that went out last year, public workshops, developing recommended strategies of the plan, and a public comment period that was held in early 2025. The plan is broken up into three components. The first is the housing needs assessment. I know that's a lot of data and analysis, but it really helps frame where the town is in terms of housing and population trends and provide a really good foundation for the recommendations that come later in the plan. The second element is the housing challenges section. So what kind of regulatory, environmental, or financial constraints are preventing the town from achieving its housing goals? And the final component is the recommended strategies. So this section includes kind of a full description of each strategy, which are broken into four different categories. As well, I want to emphasize that there's an action plan at the very end in the form of an implementation matrix. So hopefully, this is a really useful tool for all boards, committees, local leaders in the town. That can be used kind of more as a reference rather than going through the entire document. It is a kind of lengthy document. So this action plan includes the anticipated timeline for each recommendation. Some are more kind of low-hanging fruit items that could be achieved in, you know, one to two years versus things that the town maybe should revisit in a few years, three, four, or five years, or something that should be happening on a more regular basis. And that section of the plan also includes parties who should be kind of championing that recommendation. I think that is kind of just overall the quick summary I wanted to give. Were there any questions from the board? If you had a chance to kind of look a little bit deeper at the plan or something you wanted to bring up from the previous meeting that we had?
I was wondering if you had any luck in helping the public understand what affordable housing is?
Yeah, I will do my best, okay. Because it is confusing. So basically, affordable housing, it's not a type of construction necessarily. It's just referring to what people are paying to live in an accommodation. So it can look like single-family ownership units. It could be duplexes. It could be, you know, groups of apartments. So basically, under the current real estate market, in order for new housing to include affordable units and for developers really to create housing and make ends meet for them, typically, the type of affordable housing that is being built these days is mixed-income rental housing. So a majority of the units are, if it's an apartment building, a majority of the units would be market-rate housing, and a percentage of those are reserved as affordable. So affordable housing can be set aside for low-income households. So those are the households that are earning 80% or less of the area median income. The area median income being like, the median income of, includes Milbury, but also the, I think it's like 20, 25 surrounding towns. It's the way the federal government kind of groups metropolitan areas. So the way they kind of set the standards for eligibility for affordable housing. So, yeah, so it can be low-income housing. Very low-income housing is set aside for those earning 60% or less of the area median income. And extremely low-income households, which are those earning, I believe, 30% or less of the area median income. And eligibility to qualify for these units is set aside based on the number of people in the household and the household and their annual income. And so that's kind of who can qualify for these units in terms of what households have to pay. The standard is that households shouldn't be paying more than 30% of their income towards rent. So maximum rents are set aside by the state, the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, EO HLC, which then are also based on the number of bedrooms and the number of people in the unit. So if we go down to, there was a chart also that's available on the town's website if people want to look a little bit more deeply at this. So rent limits can vary based on like subsidy programs, but in general, like if we're looking at 30% of a, the 80% of AMI, a studio for a single person would be 1,700 right now. And this is updated every year. A one-bedroom for one or two people, the rent limit would be about 1,800. Two-bedroom for up to three people would be 2,200. And like a four-bedroom for up to six people would be 2,836 for that. So those are some, just the numbers that are there. Yeah, I mean, this is, so that's what it would look like for if there was a mixed-income development built in town. Those are kind of the numbers you'd have.
So I just want to throw some figures out. $10.
Don't make me do that.
We're going to keep it simple. So $10, 30% of that is $3, right?
$3.33.
$3.33. That's what's paid out of pocket for the tenant and the government pays the rest. Just so people out there understand. A third. So it's a third that the average low-income housing person would pay toward that 1,700 or whatever the circumstances may be.
So what you're saying is the actual renting of that apartment is three times the amount that the person that's paying the third is?
That's correct.
Holy shit.
That's what they're saying.
Okay, what's that multiply out to?
So it's just...
A lot, thank you.
Crazy, the numbers are crazy and low-income housing, now, thank you for that information. I'm hoping that that helps the public a lot because the public is looking to rent or buy or lease or whatever. And if, if I have an income of $10 and the rent is $8, I don't have enough money to survive. But now my rent is $3, so that gives me enough money to survive because the government or I'm going to throw the elephant right out there and say the taxpayer will support these people.
Correct.
Correct?
I think so. I think I'm understanding.
Pretty much the way it works. So I hope that helps people that are out there listening and looking for answers on what is low-income housing? Because that's been a question that's been under our belts for...
It's section, they used to call it section eight.
They used to, but they don't call it that anymore.
But that was insulting.
Right.
So we changed it.
So they made it more complicated.
They made it more complicated, but we still pay the freight.
It's still the same thing.
Right.
It's just defined a little different.
We pay the freight.
So the question is, with all that I read and I, Fran, I still didn't get through the whole thing.
I did, twice.
Twice? Well, God bless you. I like what I saw. It's, I saw some really interesting things about small housing units or, they call them little houses?
Yeah.
HUD.
There are sheds that people live.
Really, really caught my eye a lot. And it reminds me of...
They're a little better than a shed.
Yeah, it reminds me of up at Memorial, is it?
Yep.
It reminds me of that community, but that's town-owned. And what they were talking about with little houses is it wouldn't be so much town-owned, it would be a community, which is really cool, the HUD thing. There was several people in my very large family that ended up using HUD and I call that a starter house. And it gives them an opportunity to get themselves a piece of property, get started in life, and carry on from there. And it will always stay a HUD house. Is that correct? It will always stay that way.
If it's deed-restricted in perpetuity. Some of them have limitations on deed restrictions, like 30 years, they'll expire and have to renew that. But a lot of the housing being built these days is deed-restricted in perpetuity.
Okay. Well, that's all I have for now, I guess. Through the chair?
Yeah, Fran, Fran goes first.
Oh, are you? I read, I read this thing twice. To me, this is a mirror of our master plan that we have. Nothing's changed, very little, if anything. That's why I had to read it twice. And I noticed you didn't take into account the comments that were at the end of the survey that you took. You didn't take into account the survey. The survey said 10% apartment buildings. The preponderance of it was single-family homes on a smaller scale, you know, a single-family homes so that elderly could move into them downsized from their monster houses like I have, trying to get out of it, try to find a house, try to find a ranch. They don't make them anymore. They don't make them. But it bothered me that all the comments that were made, I can read some of them if you want. You know what I mean? Let me see, let me pick one. "We rent. We would love to remain in Milbury, but that seems not in the current, in the cards currently." Currently renting, but would love to buy if I could afford it. Looking for smaller, affordable housing for the elderly, there's one of them. Taxes are too high. Taxes have tripled since I've moved here. We've sold our house to our daughter family and looking at adding on to their houses. We can no longer afford to build on property we own. So adding apartment buildings, I guess is going to be my thing here. Isn't helping any of those situations? Not at all.
I mean, you referenced the downsizing. That's a, that's an option for folks who can't, don't want to maintain their properties anymore.
Well, I would love to downsize.
Yeah, but are there options here?
There are, there are no houses. If I, to downsize, I'd have to buy a house that's probably 30 or 40 years old and remodel it. And I don't, I'm not in the remodeling mood anymore. I'm done with that stuff. But the comments on the back of this, and there's a ton of them, you've read them, I'm sure. There's a ton of them. Want a small town, want to keep it a small town, don't want apartment buildings. But in this thing here, you got apartment buildings. It's like you said, okay, you got to hit this 10% threshold. And this is the way we're going to do it, irregardless of what the citizens think. I don't think that's right.
I'm trying to look at what strategies you're referring to, where we're saying build big apartments, because I don't think we...
Wait, what, please?
If there were specific strategies or recommendations in there that you didn't agree with or you don't think the comments reflected, are there any specific ones?
No, no, no. I'm telling you what your statistics say from your survey. That's what they say. But nowhere in this, I'm sure, there was a lot of work done to this, no doubt in my mind. But nowhere in here does it address what the citizens want. And it's not apartment complexes from what I can read.
Sorry, through the chair, I guess I would just add as well that I think this plan is not saying to only build larger apartment buildings. I think it's actually saying the opposite, where we should be looking to build a diversity of housing types, which may include some multifamily housing, also includes cottage-style housing, ADUs, small-scale affordable units. I think that's part of, part of the strategies that we looked at was diversifying what new housing looks like.
Where does that say that in this?
I have to pull it up, but there's a whole section on strategies that the town can take over the next one to five-plus years to...
You're pointing your strategy at that 10% goal, with your statement saying, "We can do 0.5% per year, affordable," towards that 10% goal. But every year, you want to put 5%. Well, that 5% is going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. And you're never going to reach that 10% of total. You'll never, you'll never hit it.
I mean, it's possible. There are a number of communities that have hit it, and obviously, it is not something that's going to happen overnight. But the idea is that this plan is trying to provide a roadmap for the town to work towards that 10% affordable housing.
I know what it is, but my point is, it's not the right roadmap. It's not what the citizens said. It's not what they said in the survey. The survey results are right in here. Predominantly, single-family homes, smaller, single-family homes.
Well, predominantly, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Through the chair. Predominantly is 90%, and they're looking for 10% possible multifamily housing. 10% of, 10% of what they're discussing is a very small portion of...
Correct. And that, this doesn't address that, in my opinion. This is pretty much a mirror of a master plan that we have.
Is that a bad thing?
I didn't say it was a bad thing. But so what's the purpose? You take a survey from the people, what do you want? They tell you, single-family home, condos, townhouses, apartment builders are way down the bottom. If you looked at the chart that was in there.
I get, I get that.
Way down the bottom. So what does that tell us? That tells us the citizens want smaller houses. How to get a developer to build smaller houses, I have no idea. But there was comments in here also about Clearview, two-bedroom condo. They just sold one for $740,000. That's not affordable, in my view.
Yeah, I'm just listening to Fran, listen. I think maybe our plan should send a message, including a message, to the state of Massachusetts to revise their numbers because they are unrealistic, as Fran said. And I think we should include that right in the, right in the very beginning. But this whole thing should be revised based on new numbers from the state of Massachusetts that are realistic in nature. Because the ones we're using now aren't. Would, you agree?
I agree.
I, I mean...
Saying that right along.
Yeah, well...
I mean, it's...
That's why I read it twice.
But you're not going to get builders to come in and build small houses. That's the problem.
Well, eventually, if they don't have anything, they don't build anything, they go out of business and they starve to death. So eventually, they will start building some smaller ones if you force their hand.
See, what, what they, builders have done is, they've maxed out the large house market. They've maxed it out. People can't afford them. So they got to go small. The Ben Miles and the Billy Forrest that built this town, those are the kind of houses we need, believe it or not. The thousand-square-foot home. You know?
Yeah, and I think we addressed that in the plan as well. There's a recommendation for pursuing cottage housing communities.
Yeah, we did, but how do we get there with the builders?
There are builders that are very willing to do that.
Flat out.
Yeah.
No, they only build with branches.
Well, that's what I meant.
To maximize their profit.
So that's what I meant by the...
I've talked to developers that, in, in Central Mass, that they're very willing to, to work with a town that is supportive of it.
Send them here.
I will, I'll put you in contact, I have, I have names.
If I could, that's what I meant by what I read. I didn't read the whole thing. Made sense. If we can put a plan in play to make what the community wants happen... What's he giggling over there?
No, I mean, he's coughing.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. I wasn't making fun of you or anything.
If we, if we can put a plan in play to make that happen, what, what's wrong with that?
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, but this isn't it.
So the CM, CMRPC is just trying to help us coordinate this thing? Is that what your, what your ultimate goal is?
Yeah, we've provided technical assistance, but we have been working with a committee of representatives from the town.
Yes, that, I get that.
Yeah, we know that.
And the little house or the smaller houses is definitely the way to go because we're all headed in that road. We're all, we're not millennials, we're...
Old.
We're old. We're old. And everybody's going to want a smaller place to live. And they don't want to rent. And I get that.
No, we're baby boomers.
Well, you might be, you're a baby boomer.
Not rent when it costs you more than it costs you to buy your house.
I know, I know. Just to move in.
It's ridiculous.
Just to move in, it's a, it's a deposit on a house.
Absolutely.
Well, them small, those mini homes, those aren't cheap by any means, as far as...
They're a hell of a lot cheaper than what we're building now.
Well, they're a lot cheaper than a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath house, no doubt.
There's nothing cheap anymore.
No, I understand that, but...
I mean, in the, in the big picture, it makes sense. I like what I saw. And I really like the small house idea and being able to rezone areas to...
We need to rezone, we get, we get into the zoning, we need to rezone it so that they can build... can build it.
Yeah, we need to be able to rezone areas to put in five units on an acre or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, they got nice little pictures in here.
Yeah, I saw all that. I saw some pretty nice graphs, too. Yeah, yeah. They put a lot of work into this.
I'm not saying they didn't.
There's no doubt about it.
I'm just saying that I don't think that the comments from the citizens were taken into consideration. It was like it blew right over.
Well, I want to thank you for your time.
Oh, they did great. I mean...
Okay, Tom.
Yep, I did have one...
You have to get up.
Don't go away. Please. Okay.
Oh, my God. Terry Burke, Dotson, 20 CLO Terrace. You were talking about the eighty percent or less of the median. What is the median income right now for Millbury if you are a single person? One person?
The area median income?
Right.
That the state uses or just for the town? Because that's not a metric that...
Let's go with the town, because that's what we do.
The town. Can I look at my laptop?
We'll, we'll...
I don't know how the town...
We'll, we'll see.
And then the other question, the other question I'm gonna ask is that the gentleman brought up the idea that rent was gonna be subsidized for the town, and I do know that, let's say Canal Street, a one-bedroom on Canal Street's two thousand was, was a couple of months back, two-thousand-eight-hundred dollars a month. And they had one, out of the seventy-two that are there, or the sixty-eight that are there, one affordable unit. And I believe that was either fourteen hundred or seventeen hundred. So does that mean that the town has to pay the difference, let's say seventeen hundred, the difference between seventeen hundred and two-thousand-eight-hundred back to the developer? Does the town pay that back to the developer?
That's state.
Through the chair, I can confirm that the town does not pay that to the developer.
That's state.
The state also doesn't pay that to the developer. Part of the agreement was that the, when that development was permitted, was that the affordable units would have to be provided by the developer, so they knew at the time of permitting that they would have to provide one onsite apartment that was at the eighty percent of the area median income. So they knew, but they did all their formulas for whether or not that project was feasible based on that they would have to rent that one unit for less than the rest of them.
So who made the, who makes up the difference?
Nobody.
Nobody.
Nobody. They did have six other, they were supposed to have seven, but six others were put into a group home. Okay, but that's, that was important to me. Okay, now, the question was, what is the median income for Millbury?
So the most recent stat I have is a hundred-and-nine thousand for...
We're rich.
Household income, yeah.
What does that mean? A hundred-and-nine for, how many people?
Is that two people?
That's two people.
Or one people?
It's, it includes all households of all number, sizes.
Or above.
And then the area median income, which the state is using, you know, to determine eligibility for affordable housing, is a hundred-and-seventeen thousand. So you're a little bit under that metric.
What I don't understand, how many people, does it say how many people? One person who wants to get an affordable unit, an old-timer, that wants to move in to an affordable unit.
So, yeah, through, through the chair, I'll just point to the, it might be tough for folks to see, but the chart on the screen here has the income limits for different types of affordable housing. And this line here where it says eighty percent of the area median income for one person, that's sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars per year.
So fifty-eight thousand would...
Sixty-eight thousand.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight? Okay, I can't read that, that's why I'm asking. But I appreciate the fact that you put it up.
That's amazing.
Okay.
That's a lot of money.
You did it, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
We're a rich town.
Well, you know, I'm still doing the math, you know, where you got McDonald's paying ten dollars an hour, times fifty-two, times, you know...
I think they went up to fifty.
And, and, and I'm down around twenty, I'm in the twenties somewhere, and I gotta make sixty-something in order to even afford, in order to be eligible, to qualify for affordable housing. I don't know, I live out on the street.
I suggest you stop moving.
Because that's all I can afford.
Maybe you gotta get a part-time job at McDonald's.
We got a hand. What's that? Oh, Brian, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Brian.
Hey, can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, fine.
Uh, Brian Sorajek, you have, I was just hoping to see if Emily or Connor may just be able to give a rundown on what having a housing production plan with the town may do in terms of combating fortyBs, and to what extent that would help.
So I think I described this at the previous meeting, but, so if the town has an active housing production plan in place, so, you know, we approved this tonight, the select board approves it, the state approves it, it's, it's valid for five years. If you pair having that with if the town were to produce a half percent of its total year-round stock of housing units as affordable units, so that means, sorry, I just had the number, thirty units.
Per year, yep.
Thirty units. Then it can claim safe harbor from fortyB for a year. Or if it were to produce sixty affordable units, it can claim safe harbor for two years. So that's the really kind of like active part of this plan. But again, it's also just a kind of a strategic plan for the town to have in place to work on its affordable housing stock, but also diversifying, like Connor said, the, just the housing stock in general, just having something in place that boards can refer to. So, does that clarify, Brian?
Yep, that's it. Thanks, Emily.
Through the chair. So if I understand this correctly, you got, your calculation in here that I read there was thirty units per year. If we only got ten percent of those units being affordable, that means you gotta build an apartment complex of three hundred units to get to that thirty. That's not what the people want. Go ahead. Am I doing my math wrong?
I think there's a lot of different factors that could determine how you get to thirty units per year. It doesn't have to be ten percent of a three-hundred-unit apartment building.
But that is one of them.
But that's one of them. I just made it simple.
Yeah.
Okay? No matter what, if you're only getting ten percent, you gotta build three hundred something somewhere.
Well, you're not always gonna, it's not always necessarily ten percent of multifamily development, I guess is what I'm saying.
Yeah, you can go up to twenty-five on a fortyB.
Yeah, or it could be a single-family home that gets renovated with affordable housing funding, and that one unit becomes on the SHI list, so...
Yeah, but that's not thirty units. That's my point. That's one unit.
I, yeah, I'm just...
How do you get to that thirty? How do you get to that ten percent? How? It's impossible.
Yeah.
It's a lot of construction.
It is, it is.
That's what I mean. It's...
That's why we should put the note in front of the thing, tell them the state, you're out of your mind.
Yeah, go away.
Make it realistic so we can, so we can at least work with you. Because these, the way you've got it listed now, this is insanity. But I worded it a little differently earlier, maybe we should use that approach.
Yeah, when we submit to the state, there's like a memorandum that's included at the front saying the vote, both of the boards have voted for it, so I'm happy to include that as part of the memorandum. That goes to, and it'll be signed by the chair of the select board. Sounds okay? It wouldn't be in the actual plan, but it would be in the memorandum that's attached.
Right, right. I'm just...
Right, but this thing has no teeth anyway. It's a guideline.
Right.
Has no teeth.
Right, there's no repercussion.
There are not repercussions, no, no. If you do not make that thirty units, like there, no repercussions for the town. This is not like MBTA communities where you're gonna get funding taken away if you don't do it.
We're showing them we're gonna try and wink at them. Because it's impossible to do. The numbers just aren't there.
Well, actually, Franny, we are gonna try to build some more income housing. Whether we meet their criteria is, we'll never, never will, so we're not even worried about that. We're really trying to do what's right for the town.
I have no problem with that. My elderly that have lived here, I'm old, you know, I've been here for fifty years. Like I just told you, I want to downsize. I don't need the monster house I have. My children are gone, you know? But buy a ranch? Try to find one. Nobody builds them. That's what we need, but you can't force a contractor to do that. They're gonna wanna come in and a big house is the best bang for their buck. They're gonna make a bigger profit per square foot.
Yeah.
Per se.
It's hard, the town can't change all these macroeconomic factors that are going in, you know?
No, I know that.
But the plan should recommend things that are within the town's power to change. You know, so it is challenging, yeah. It's, we're not gonna solve the housing crisis, unfortunately, right in this town, you know, there's always gonna be that challenge.
And like, like Reggie said, this is just a guideline. It doesn't mean anything, in my opinion.
I think there are really implementable solutions here. I mean, we're working right now with CMRPC on an inclusionary zoning bylaw, and seeing what, what would fit and be appropriate for the town. So things like that, that the town actually can, can work on.
Okay.
Yeah.
What's appropriate for the town? What were the comments at the end? What was appropriate?
Why are you putting her on the spot like that?
No, because, what are you talking about? The comments are right in here. It's in what the people responded.
She's talking hypothetically, though.
So am I. Oh, I'm talking a fact here.
I know you are.
I'm sorry. Shame on me. I shouldn't talk a fact.
Okay.
But, you know, what you...
Nothing's, Franny, nothing's gonna change that. I know what you're saying. I'd like to move on, on this. You know, we hear you.
I know, I've heard that before, we hear you. But then we go the other way.
Well, I worked on this, this plan, so I'm gonna vote for it, Franny, I'm sorry.
That's fine, I said you worked hard on it. I know you did, took you three years or whatever, I have no idea.
Not quite, but, no.
So I don't see any other hands up.
I don't either.
Anybody else?
Can I get a motion to, what are we gonna do? Is this...
I'll make a motion to adopt the Millbury Housing Production Plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, and a second, and any further discussion?
No.
Nope.
All in favor?
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No. Four, four-one, four-to-one.
If, if some other board, well, you stuck your toe in it now. Some other board wants to do it, go ahead, I ain't doing it.
Okay, so here we go. Now we can go to the, oh, boy. Two-sixty-nine West Main Street, site plan review, stormwater permit, and special permit.
Okay, in accordance with the provision, yeah, let me try that again. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter Forty-A of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Millbury Zoning Bylaws, and the Millbury Municipal Code, the Millbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at seven PM on Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, at the Millbury Town Hall, one-twenty-seven Elm Street, Millbury, Mass., on the application from Vertex Towers LLC, property located at two-sixty-nine West Main Street, Millbury, Mass., for a special permit, site plan review, and stormwater permit under Article Twelve, Subsection Four, and Section Fourteen, Subsection One of the Millbury Zoning Bylaws, and Chapter Thirteen, Subsection Fifteen of the Millbury Municipal Code. The applicant proposes to construct a one-hundred-and-fifteen-foot-tall, monopole-style tower, wireless communication facility with associated site improvements. The applicant will conduct a visibility demonstration to illustrate the location and the height of the proposed facility by means of a balloon raised on the proposed location to a height of a hundred-and-fifteen feet. Said visibility demonstration will be held Tuesday, February eighteenth, from nine AM to twelve PM, weather and wind conditions permitting. In the event of inclement weather, the visibility demonstration will be rescheduled to the next weekday and each successive weekday until weather and wind conditions permit a successful demonstration. Please check the website, www.vizdem.com, afternoon, the day of, the day before the scheduled dates. To determine if the balloon will be up the following day. The application is available for review in the Planning Board Department via appointment during normal business hours and online at the Planning Board's webpage, millburymass.gov/ planningboard. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place specified above. Richard Goslin, Chairman.
Good evening. My name is Francis Parisi, representing the applicant Vertex Towers. With the chair's permission, I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd like to plug in so that people can see it on the screen. Would that be appropriate?
Okay. Hopefully, it's not too, too long.
I'll try to talk fast.
Screen's off.
There it is, right there. As was read in the notice, we're here tonight seeking a special permit under your zoning bylaw for what you guys call a wireless telecommunications facility. Everyone else in the world calls it a cell tower. In addition, we require site plan review and a stormwater management permit. By way of introduction, Vertex Towers is not a wireless carrier with what we call a wireless infrastructure developer. What's happened in the telecommunications world is that the names you've heard of before, Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, have gotten out of the real estate business, and they've partnered up with folks like Vertex to build wireless infrastructure. And it's a system that's been evolving for the last several years, and Vertex is essentially a real estate developer. But at the same time, it can, because it's not beholden to any one particular company, it can divide, it can design facilities more in accordance with your zoning bylaw, in more appropriate locations for multiple telecommunications companies. We define them with the height and the structural integrity as required by your bylaw so that multiple telecommunications companies can do it. We look very carefully at your zoning bylaws, your land use regulations, but also being very respectful of the technology that we're trying to accommodate. We've been very successful in the rural and suburban markets. We've built many towers in Worcester County and even farther west, and we do a lot of work in even more rural areas, New Hampshire and Vermont, where, you know, scenery and scenic impact is, is a very big concern for people, and we try to be as respectful as possible. The property itself, I say it's large, I think it's about thirty-three acres, a very large property in the suburban one real estate, suburban one zoning district, which all zoning districts are permitted for this type of facility, subject to a special permit by the, the planning board, so that's what we're here for tonight. In addition, I think pretty much every commercial development in town requires a site plan approval, so we're requesting that as well. We gave very detailed site plans to the planning staff, which they've had a chance to review and comment on. And in addition, your bylaw has very extensive stormwater management regulations. I think this is what's considered minor. The actual development is about forty by fifty. It's very small relative to any other sites of commercial development or even residential development in town, but I still believe we require a stormwater management permit. I gave you guys a very extensive application package in accordance with your zoning bylaw. I'm not gonna go through it all tonight, but the one thing that I did do is I cut and paste your zoning bylaw into a Word document and said, here's the standard, here's how we meet it. Here's the standard, here's how we meet it. With minor exception, we need a couple waivers from the site plan regulations, but I think the facility itself meets all of the criteria for your special... for your special permit for these type of facilities, uh, with the exception of some waivers. Your zoning bylaw, typical of other towns in, in the Commonwealth, have very extensive setback regulations, height limitations, things like that. And we are very, uh, compliant in all that. As was read in the notice, we also did what we call a visibility demonstration. We put a balloon up in the air, we advertised it to all the butters, we put notices in the paper. I worked very extensively with planning staff, who was more than accommodating, uh, to get the word out. Uh, we had it up, we advertised it for last Tuesday. As you might recall, we had gale force winds last Tuesday. We weren't able to do it till Thursday. Uh, I just got the photos from the simulations this morning. I sent them over to, um, planning staff and I have them to show you tonight, um, for, uh, on the, on the screen. Um, I hope I don't need to sell wireless telecommunications. Uh, you know, the statistics are staggering. Over eighty percent of nine-one-one calls are made by mobile phones. Over fifty percent of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has cut the cord and is only using wireless as their sole source of telecommunications. Our phones are no longer telephones. They're internet access devices, streaming videos and all kinds of other things. People are trying to work from home, people are trying to, um, educate from home. People are trying to use mobile devices or even, um, stationary devices with mobile telecommunications to, uh, um, to connect to the world. And, uh, uh, you know, over time, uh, I think we're up over, we're actually over a hundred percent penetration in the United States, meaning, um, because people have multiple wireless devices, over a hundred percent of people in the world have a wireless device in the, in the, in the, in the, in the United States. So, the, the statistics are staggering. And the man for data is, um, increasing exponentially, um, the, the demand for connectivity. And the other thing that's happening too is that as we transition to more data-centric mobile telecommunications as opposed to, uh, voice and, uh, um, you know, we're developing more, um, um, you know, you hear about all the advertisements for the different generations of technology. When we first started this, we had the first and second generation. It was simply a, a bag phone in your car. And then we went to, um, you know, the, the smaller devices and transitioned from analog to digital. And now we're, uh, transitioning to like the fifth generation. And as we do that, um, what we're happening is we're shutting off the previous generations of telecommunications. When three G first came out in the town of Milbury and you have a couple towers already in town, it was an analog technology and it, uh, provided coverage to certain areas. Uh, as we shut off the three G and migrate towards five G, the, uh, the data speeds are better, the data capacity is much better. But the coverage from those facilities shrinks because of the bandwidth and because of the frequencies that the, the multiple carriers are using. So, even places where you had coverage in Milbury two and three and five years ago is losing coverage rather than gaining coverage with the advent of the newer technologies. You know, I, I, it's funny, I, I work with many regional planning commissions, like the Regional Planning Commission that was just up here. And most of the regional planning commissions that we work with are actually encouraging, um, better telecommunications because it's becoming a safety issue, the lack of telecommunications. If people can't make a nine-one-one phone call from a, a, a place on the side of the road where they have an accident or if you can't make a nine-one-one phone call from your basement or from a building like this, which is a, a huge structural impediment to a telecommunications signal, it's becoming a, um, a, a, a public safety necessity. And as you saw, I think we got letters of support from both the fire and the, uh, um, police departments here, um, trying to encourage better telecommunications. And, you know, you guys live in, in Milbury, I know you, uh, everyone I've talked to says, um, as you get west of Route one forty-six, um, to, to more rural and, uh, so what I call more rural areas of, of Milbury, going to West Milbury, towards Sutton, the, uh, um, you know, the, the coverage really drops off. And that's also a function of the, the topography. As you get onto the west of, uh, Route one forty-six, it gets much more hilly and you get valleys and places where the existing telecommunications signals along the one forty-six corridor and on the east side of, uh, Milbury get blocked out. You know, why here? Um, you know, uh, it's really challenging. Your zoning bylaw has an immense amount of restrictions with respect to where we can put these facilities setbacks. So, you need a certain requisite size lot. We need to be above the terrain and above the topography. So, we need to find, um, not necessarily hilltops, but higher elevation places that get above the, um, the, all of the topography. Um, you know, as you get, um, uh, even though a lot of, uh, West Milbury is farmland, there's still a lot of trees and the trees are actually a, uh, a topographical impediment to telecommunications facilities. So, you know, we've been working out in this area for a very long time as the Board is aware, trying to find a suitable solution to West Milbury. And, you know, we, we're back at, at two sixty-nine Main Street, West Main Street, because it's really the only alternative given all the different variables. We, we, as part of the application package, we submitted a bunch of maps showing where the existing infrastructure is, showing that there's really no existing infrastructure. One of the requirements of your bylaw is that we utilize existing infrastructure to the extent possible. And there's really nothing, you know, west of the, of the one forty-six corridor. And it's not like you can just turn up the volume of, you know, uh, um, the, the existing sites in town. All these facilities are very heavily federally regulated by, with respect to frequency range and power output. And, uh, they're not designed to cover all of Milbury, but, you know, uh, a, a few square miles in an amorphous, uh, uh, way to, to, uh, provide coverage to a small area. And the reason for that, it's a, it's a two-way communication. This phone talks to the nearest cell tower and the cell tower talks to the nearest phone. And so, you don't wanna have a high-powered device that's trying to connect to something in Worcester or near Boston. It's trying to find something as close as possible in Milbury. And, and, you know, as, as you look at the topography out in, uh, um, uh, West Milbury, there's a lot, series of hills, um, you know, the existing road infrastructure is down in valleys, but there's a bunch of hills, including the hill that we're on, that becomes a, a topographical impediment to the, the telecommunications signal. We looked at many different, um, other possibilities to cite this, uh, to make sure we were in the right place. Um, you know, we, we need to be at a, a certain elevation. As you look at the, the land use out there, there's, um, some larger parcels that accommodate setbacks, but there's a lot of smaller parcels and residentially-used parcels that, that, um, um, don't accommodate a type of facility like this. In addition, we have to find willing landowners. These aren't huge moneymakers for the landowner. It's, uh, you know, we, we pay rent for forty by fifty and pay a rent commensurate with forty by fifty, not for the thirty-three-acre parcel that we're on. So, finding appropriate landowners is, is a challenge. And we explored many different lots, uh, in the area to, um, determine that not only this the best lot, it's really the only lot that we can find to, to, to develop this type of facility. The lot itself is, like I said, I think it's thirty-three acres. It has frontage on West Main Street, but goes substantially back, um, to the south. It's, um, there's an existing commercial, uh, business, a, a farm and hardware, uh, farm, uh, supply store. So, it's one of the few commercial uses in the area that, uh, this dovetails with. At the same time, you know, given the size of it, I would say almost forty percent, sixty percent of it is uncleared. So, it, uh, it provides a vegetative buffer to mitigate the visual impact of this. Um, there's an existing, um, driveway and curb cut off of Main Street. So, we're not building a new access drive off of Main Street. We'll utilize existing driveway and then build an access driveway up the hill along the existing cleared, uh, clearings to minimize the amount of trees that have to come down. The, um, the lot, because of the size of the facility, we meet ample all the setbacks requirement. We need, one of the requirements is that we be, uh, three hundred feet back from, um, all the budding property lines, which we are. With the exception of, um, the lot to the, immediately behind us, which is owned, the town-owned property. So, we ask for a waiver from that requirement. But we're more than tower height setback from all the budding property lines, which is usually the, the standard that we try to meet. So, the tower itself will be a hundred and fifteen feet tall. And so, if you draw a hundred and fifteen-foot radius, we're, um, amply setback from all the budding property lines. The facility itself is, like I said, it's very, quite small. It's a, it's unmanned, it doesn't require water, sewer. Um, it's a forty-by-fifty fenced-in compound, um, um, at the top of the hill, uh, but then setback into the trees. Um, we don't require parking per se. Um, really, um, the access driveway is really done to facilitate construction because these are unmanned and, uh, a facility like this might take six weeks or so to build. After that, no one goes by, maybe someone goes by once a month to, uh, um, make sure the fence is intact. All the electronics are remotely monitored. You know, a lot of the, um, um, telecommunications, the antennas, if they have to tweak them at all or adjust them at all, it can be done remotely. So, uh, um, it, it's minimally invasive from a traffic and a, and a driveway perspective. Um, maybe one vehicle a month after the construction process. The tower itself is similar to other towers in town, it's a monopole facility. It's a, um, once we get Planning Board approval, we, uh, go back and do some geotechnical analysis, um, to make sure we know what's underground there and then design a foundation very specific to that. There might be some ledge, we're not sure. Uh, but we do, um, very extensive, and then we design a foundation very specific to that. So, these are very heavily over-engineered, they don't fall down. And there's lots of data to support that. Uh, we've had lots of natural disasters in the last several years, Katrina and Sandy. And, uh, um, these type of facilities, because of the engineering, um, aren't, you know, are designed not to fall down and are very heavily engineered, appropriate to the, the wind and weather conditions that we, um, utilize. And like I said, these are very low-powered facilities, uh, you know, um, um, your zoning bylaw says, um, use existing structures if appropriate, like church steeples or tall buildings. And there's not a whole lot of tall things in Milbury. But I did a project in Worcester where we did, we put similar antennas on all the Worcester Housing Authority buildings because those were the tallest buildings in town. And the city of Worcester said that's the most appropriate place 'cause they're existing structures. And, uh, um, and, you know, they did a lot of research to verify for themselves that they're very low-powered, very safe facilities. So, it's a, and we provided data in the application to show, even at full build-out, if we were to get multiple telecommunications companies all broadcasting at the same time, that it's well under applicable FCC limits with respect to radio frequency exposure. And then what this is designed to do is cover, you know, not all of Milbury, but it provides much better coverage to the, the West Milbury area, the West Main Street, uh, Old Common going back towards one forty-six and, uh, um, you know, going down towards the Sutton Line and, uh, um, a little bit west towards, uh, um, you know, to the, uh, the next town to the west, I can't remember what it is. So, I think, you know, I think it does a pretty good job. And, you know, this is only a hundred and fifteen feet, which in our world is actually very short. Our, we tend to build structures a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy feet. But because of the topography here, because of the, uh, the, the dramatic elevation of this particular lot, we're able to bring down the height of the tower substantially and still achieve a, a, uh, a very good coverage, um, for West Milbury. Everyone wants to know what it's gonna look like. And, uh, like I said, we did the visibility demonstration. I worked with Connor quite extensively to get the word out. We sent notice to all the butters, we put ads in the paper. And, uh, and what we do is we engage engineers to certify that the balloon was up at a hundred and fifteen feet. Then they drive around and take photographs and, or appropriate, do photo simulations. And I just wanna jump to that real quick. What this map represents is where the engineers, after they put the balloon up in there, they drove around and took photographs of the, uh, places where you could see the balloon, where the, the green, uh, dots are. The yellow dots where there's kinda, um, obscured view through trees. And then the red dots are where there was no visibility. Uh, and, uh, I'll just kinda scroll through them. It's kinda random, the numbers, so we just gotta kinda jump back and forth.
Could I interrupt you just for one second, Reggie? Is that okay?
What was that?
Yeah.
Could I interrupt?
Yeah, no, go, yes, absolutely.
Just to be clear, the balloon, the level is at the bottom of the balloon?
Correct. That's correct. Uh, um, as we learned through deflate gate, balloons increase and, uh, uh, shrink, during weather. So, we can measure the string. So, the string was a hundred and fifteen feet. So, the balloon is actually up higher than the tower, but I can certify, an engineer certified that the string was a hundred and fifteen feet.
I just wanted to...
So, that helps. But then, uh, so, um, the, the most prominent view is like straight on from, um, um, West Main Street, you know, both, uh, um, existing property, uh, which is photo one and then the property right next door. Uh, and this is what it looks like, this is kinda from the back of the parking lot. And then, um, um, and then what we can do is do a photo simulation, see how the, the tower goes down a little bit from the photo. But that's really what it looks like. It, um, it's, um, you know, it's visible. You, you, this has got kinda much the same view that you'll see from the entrance to, uh, the farm store. But, uh, uh, you know, and so what, what I'm, what you, the other thing you'll notice here is that you're not seeing a hundred and fifteen feet of tower. What this tells me is you're seeing about thirty feet of tower. So, it really kinda mitigates the visual impact. Uh, there's a, the house next door, I'm not sure of the address, but it's one block down and a little bit of visibility there. But this is, see, I'm seeing, you know, thirty feet of tower, uh, not the full hundred and fifteen feet. Farther down, um, um, uh, West Main, um, you know, it's kinda obscured by the trees. And what you can see here is that, uh, we didn't do a sim, but, uh, that, when the trees fill in, it'll, that, that tower will be invisible from that location. From other places, um, uh, right by West Main and Singletary Road, um, again, you could see the balloon, but, uh, you're gonna have a very obscured view uh, as, um, the, the leaves come back on the trees. Taken from, uh, uh, the boat ramp at, um, Singletary Lake, you know, you can kinda sorta see it, but really not, uh, uh, in any significant impact. By Old Common Road, no visual, you know, you couldn't see the balloon at all. This is taken east looking west. I'm not sure the cross street here, but, uh, um, again, some visibility. But, you know, the farther away you get, the more insignificant the visual impact becomes. This was taken, um, southeast on Singletary Road. You can't see the balloon at all. They didn't take a picture from the dog park, but I actually went up to the dog park and you couldn't see it from the dog park because of a, and I thought you would be able to. But, uh, you couldn't see it from the dog park. Further down from Singletary Road, no visibility. Farther, um, on, um, you know, as you get farther, um, I guess that would be west on West Main Street, you know, there was some visibility. As you know, you kinda go from the site, you go down into a valley and then back up where, I guess, West Milbury Village is. And there was some visibility there. But, uh, you know, you're getting farther and farther away, to the point where the visual impact really kinda, uh, blends in. This is taken from, I guess, the West Milbury Village and you kinda sorta see it through the trees, but not really. And then farther back on, uh, Peggy Drive, some visibility, but, uh, really minimal. And then McGrath Road, um, there was some visibility just above the trees. And usually, that, like, the, the neighborhoods that were closest to McGrath Road neighborhood, there's really no visibility because, you know, as you, as you look at the tower with the trees in front of you, that's really where the, uh, the visual impact is mitigated most successfully. This is taken from McGrath Road, um, I guess, right around the corner, where, where McGrath Road turns ninety degrees, uh, and, uh, you know, minimal visibility from there. And then the last place was on Windward Drive, which is probably three-quarters of a mile away. Uh, a little bit of visibility there. So, I think, um, you know, I can't make them invisible, we've tried. Uh, but I think, um, by reducing the height down to a hundred and fifteen feet by, uh, we've done a pretty good job of citing it most appropriately. Uh, like I said, I went through your zoning bylaw very carefully, uh, to look at, um, what you're trying to do. You're trying to encourage telecommunications by, but also be respectful of the, uh, um, the other uses in town. And also be respectful of the visual impact. I think we've done it by picking this particular lot, by having it set so far back from West Main Street and all the abutting public rights away and all the other budding properties, by designing it to have, um, um, you know, what we call co-locatable facility with the height and the structural integrity for multiple telecommunications companies. I think we've certainly satisfied all the criteria for your zoning bylaw. And the other thing, I'm, I'm sure the town is know, is aware of this, but, uh, almost, um, thirty years ago at this point, um, the, um, the federal government got involved with wireless infrastructure citing. It's when they broke up AT&amp;T into multiple telecommunications companies. It, um, um, permitted multiple, multiple wireless companies in an attempt to foster telecommunications, I mean, competition in the telecommunications world. We now have multiple Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, some other regional companies providing, uh, telecommunications. There's all, there's always rumors that other people are gonna get into it, Amazon or Google. And what the, uh, the government, um, tries to encourage this type of development by telling towns, you don't have to say yes. have to say yes, but you really can't say no without sufficient reason. If we were too close to a sensitive use, a historic landmark, or something like that, you know, a school, or, you know, something really sensitive that the town could say no. But like again, the government tries to encourage us. With that government benefit also comes great burden. These facilities are heavily federally regulated. Unlike any other development in town, we have to go through a very extensive environmental impact analysis under what's called the National Environmental Policy Act, to make sure that we don't have any impact on migratory birds or endangered plant and wildlife species. We have to make sure we have no impact on Native American resources, or wetlands, or anything like that. So we, independent of what we do with the town, we go through a very extensive process to ensure, and our engineers are actually quite good at it. We can do some database research and some visual observations as they're developing the site to ensure. But, you know, unlike anything else in town, we undergo a very extensive federal regulatory due diligence process. So I have the site plans. I can show you the pictures in more detail, but at this point, I'd like to take a deep breath and say, respectfully request that you grant the special permit and approve the site plans. I've been working, we got some comments from the town engineer just last night, Sunday. We had some comments from Connor last week, and we're working through some of the site plan details. But, so I think what might be appropriate is that the town would consider granting the special permit. I know we have some more details to provide the engineers with this port of stormwater runoff and stuff like that. Those tend to be ministerial and not a big deal for us, given the size of the lot, the setbacks, and the minimally invasive nature of our development. So I'd like to just talk about the special permit, and then we can work with Connor and the staff on the site plan details.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. What's, I can't think of the name of the satellite that goes around the world with...
Starlink.
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 Yeah, that. What's your opinion on that taking over all cell towers and cell towers becoming obsolete?
Okay, I have a, I have three responses to that. And my first is a joke. Do you want Elon Musk controlling your telecommunications networks? Okay, that's just a joke, and there's no response required. Two, that's a technology that's being developed, and it's a very long time before it's going to be utilized very extensively in the United States for one reason. The volume of telecommunications that we have in the United States is just staggering, the amount of data. And you'd need multiple, multiple satellites covering multiple, multiple geographic areas, to the point where you'd have satellites colliding with each other. I'm not saying it's never going to come, but unlike any other development in town, most zoning bylaws do. Yours doesn't, but Connor actually picked up on it and suggested that we post a bond that says if this becomes obsolete, that there's, we're required to take it down. But if I disappear, because I know I'm going to disappear, because I know this is going to last longer than me and all of us in this room. However, if there's some, you know, obsolescence that we post a bond to take it down, if we don't do it, the town has the bond resource to take it down. And we're perfectly willing to do that. We, it's not going away. The need is there, but, you know, we thought wired phones were going to be here forever, and now wireless has taken over. Is it theoretically possible that satellite does? Maybe. But we're not predicting it. We're not slowing down. Elon Musk can talk all he wants, but I don't think it's coming to America anytime soon.
That was a great answer. Thank you. The other question, I was, I just happened to be in Oxford today, and I saw the tower that's over by Home Depot, 395 area, and it's quite tall. It's a lot taller than 115 feet, but it's an eyesore. It doesn't look, is there any way that you can make this tower not look like a tower? Can you put some fake trees on it, or?
My response at, and is always a joke too.
Not official Christmas tree.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder. Some people find the fake trees offensive because they're fake trees. It's never going to look like a Christmas tree. We can put branches on them. We've done them before. And most of the time after we do them, people say, take the branches off, because it's not what they thought. And it also depends on perspective. If you see, it's never going to be equal to the horizon. It's going to, I mean, the tree canopy, it's going to be above it, but it's not going to taper. It's going to look like a pipe cleaner or a toilet bowl brush. It's, and, you know, we can go back through the pictures, and there's a couple where I'd even agree with you that it might look appropriate, but there's other vantage points that it would look really stupid. And I was just in a town, Asheville, Mass. They said, put a tree, and I said, you don't want it. You don't want it. And they said, yeah, we do. And we put it up, and the minute I went up, they called me and said, take the branches off. And, literally. And I said, I can't now. We designed it. It's designed, it's very engineered and it's very, it's just, they're not just tacked on, they're engineered so they don't fall off. It's just, what we've, someone else told me in your position, you can't put lipstick on a pig.
Oh, you can't.
Well, yeah, you're right. But, you know, it just, by trying to hide it, it calls more attention to it. And I just, I just don't think it's appropriate.
Gotcha. These are just questions that I think the public would ask.
No, I know, I agree. I agree.
Thank you, Rich.
Chris.
Rich, you always have a question for these. You always have a question for these.
I do.
Oh, yeah. I have one too, yeah. I have like three or four, but yeah.
I got a couple.
Branny's only got a couple, so let him go.
You said you had letters. Is there letters from the fire department and the police chief on this?
Yeah, through the chair, there are. Both the fire department and police department provided comment letters. They included requests to install repeater telecommunications. I'm not sure exactly the right.
Well, I know they want to get on the tower. I know that.
Yep.
But my concern is, what did the fire chief say about the road? It's like the Long and Winding Road. You know that song? And I see a couple of S's in there. I'm not sure that a rather large fire truck can make them S-turns.
These are designed to be in more remote areas.
I understand that.
And, you know, I've been doing this for quite a while. We, you know, when we do work up in New Hampshire, we build them on mountaintops without access roads, because that's the best place to go. And we built facilities where we helicopter in the equipment and all the, everything that you need. We don't design them, does public safety want to come on? Yes. But the public safety vehicles that go up there to utilize their equipment are not the fire apparatus. They're the two-wheel drive, the four-wheel drive pickup trucks. So, and the road that we designed, it's not a road. It's a driveway to facilitate construction.
I can see where it is.
Right. But, and then one, and, you know, there were some parts that were a little steep, not too steep for us, but to make it less steep would have been more switchbacks. So our engineers are very conscious, and I talked about it today, you know, and we could have, you know, designed it something that would have been, you know, accessible by anybody. But nobody accesses these things after construction, so.
So these things never catch on fire?
Branny, I'd like to, well, we lost one member. I'd like to post.
I agree.
You know, break and let him finish.
Oh, that's fine.
That's fine with you two.
You have a break? Good with me.
Yeah, can you take us off the air for a minute, please?
Who was it? Oh, you, Franny, you were in the middle of your question.
Oh, I just was curious about the, because I hadn't seen the statements from the fire department, but you're claiming that you don't need to get a big fire apparatus up there. I guess that was my question. Those things don't catch on fire?
No. You know, it's all solid-state electronics. There's no moving parts. There will be a generator up there with propane, but...
That'll catch on fire.
But it's no different than like the high-tension power lines. You know, as you go across, you know, there's other places in Millbury where they can't get to the power poles. It's, you know, given the cost-benefit, we could design a road up to Commonwealth of Massachusetts and Millbury Specs. And we'd be talking about that for years, and it'd be way more visual, maybe more impactful. We don't do it because it's not necessary. We don't require access. It's not a road, it's a driveway. And it's really, after construction, you know, we'll maintain it. I know the town has stormwater maintenance requirements, and we'll certainly do that, but it's not, we're not maintaining it for our own ex. We don't plow it in the winter. If somebody needs...
I understand that.
We don't plow it in the winter. So, so if somebody needed to go up there, they'd bring a four-wheel drive, you know, vehicle or something. Or, you know, if we had to do winter construction, we'd plow it for that one instance, but it's not routinely plowed. And so it's, we don't design them for that type of...
If said generator and propane tank blows up in the winter, and there's a foot of snow in there, you ain't getting there.
Right. The top of the hill's going to burn down, that's all.
But, no, but it's...
I feel like it's down to the level where they plow the roads.
Where all the abutters are, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, I see.
It's no different than if there was a lightning strike up there. The police and fire would deal with it the way they've always dealt with it. You know what I mean? It's like, we don't design these roads for, because it would, in order to design it to fire specifications, we'd have to do multiple switchbacks going up the hill. And, you know, we need the elevation. We need the setbacks. It would be far more invasive to build a road like that to accommodate someone that's never going to go up there.
I guess my question is, why isn't the road straight?
It was designed to hug the tree line, so that we don't have to take down trees... It was designed to hug the tree line, so that we don't have to take down trees.
Okay, that's my answer.
Right, right. And the tree line wasn't exactly straight.
Okay. So you went through the, over the river and through the woods. Okay, I get it.
I wouldn't say that. It's just, if you look at an aerial photo, let me try to get it up here. I have an aerial photo up here now. Basically, it just hugs the tree line. So it, I don't know if I have, yeah, can you see my, so it basically comes up along here, along here, cuts through this little pond of trees, and then comes up here. So it's really, it's really not straight, and it's not switchbacks. It's just designed to be minimally invasive to the farm and to the tree line.
Okay. I'm just looking, because on this map, it looks more like an S than it does there.
No, if you look, that's the actual design of the road, and it really just, you can see it just hugs the tree line.
Okay, that's not what this is showing. Showing like it's going right up through the middle, like that. That's my question.
We don't allow 12% slopes on roads. Pass. Whatever.
Right.
8% max. You've got them designed for 12. Fix it.
Can I, see, that's part of the same discussion, though?
Yeah, I know that, what the discussion is.
But the, this is not a road. No one's gonna drive up it, it's a driveway.
That's semantics. It's an access. It's the only access up there.
For us.
Would be my guess. And it has to be accessible. 12% is not accessible, and my few, 8% maximum. Number one. Number two, if you're turning around and saying that this is, you don't need access to this. If it catches on fire, who cares? Well, if you're gonna go with that mentality, then I'm gonna switch to the mentality that says, okay, then that tower is gonna put itself out, that generator's gonna put itself out, and you're gonna have all of that hardware, software, chemicals, whatever, stored onsite up there in case this thing goes. Or we get access. Okay? Years, years ago, I can't remember, I've lost track of time, there was, I think, a company called Light Tower, did you, or something like that? Did you ever hear of a company like that?
I used to do work for them, yes.
Yeah. In which they were pushing another frequency. A frequency that would harm, not only myself as a surveyor, but it would harm the police departments, it would actually harm the military. I was floored with all the people that this frequency that they were gonna award was gonna corrupt, including, ironically, the farmers that use GB, you know, and they're in a farming area. So is this frequency included in this tower? And if, so, once you put the tower up, my biggest, bigger question really is, if Verizon wants to come put something on, do they have to come to us and ask us? Or do they just go to you and put it on? I mean, how's this work? I don't understand it.
The second question first. Vertex owns the structure.
Yes.
And then we lease space on it to Verizon and AT&amp;T. We build the structure with the height and the structural integrity, and we build the infrastructure, so they wouldn't need to come to you. They would just get a building permit for what they, an electrical permit.
So if they're running a frequency that we don't want in town, we have no say. You were the only one that has a say, right?
Right. Frequencies are very heavily federally regulated. They're regulated by the FCC.
Yeah, and the last I know, Light Tower didn't get through. But there's been billions trying to get this. I don't think they're gonna give up.
Like I said, issues with respect to frequencies is the jurisdiction of the FCC, you know, and they're all very heavily federally regulated to not create interference. And I think, at one point, the Light Tower frequencies were very close to the public safety frequencies.
Yes, they were.
The police and fire, and so they ended up swapping out frequencies to separate them so that there would be no interference. You know, there's a whole range of frequencies. It starts with AM and FM.
I get that. I'm just looking for reassurance that we're not shutting the farmers, the police, the military, and everybody else off so some bureaucrat can make a few billion dollars.
No, no, definitely not. It's the same, it's the same frequencies that you use with your Verizon phone or your AT&amp;T or T-Mobile phone right now.
Well, I feel better about that.
Yeah, and so it, and like I said, if there was any kind of interference, it would be because of a malfunction, not because of an intention. And it's very easily corrected. And, you know, people like Verizon are, you know, they have to stay in their lane, their frequency band, their power put, and if they exceed it, they're subject to huge fines. So they're very conscious about that. And I've not heard of any issues with respect to interference in years and years and years because the technology is so much easier to stay within its lane. Okay.
Through the chair? I gotta ask Connor something. Connor, this tower was, or something similar to this, was shut down or denied in 2000 or 2001? Didn't I read something about that?
Yes.
Do you know why it was denied?
There was a special permit application denied in 2001. It was for a 190-foot pole. This is a 115-foot pole. I think, generally speaking, the board at that time determined that it didn't meet the criteria outlined in the zoning bylaws, mostly for visual impact. But again, the difference in height was 75 feet.
Okay, so was the difference in height that was the problem? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else got any other questions right now? I don't know.
I don't know. Got a map?
Yep, you gotta pull yours off so we can see whether there's anybody at home.
Come on.
We don't see anybody at home, but we got somebody here. Come on up.
I'll be up there.
Yes, unfortunately, you've got no choice.
My name's Robert Pearson. My family is the owner of that property. In 19, in 2001, we got an application from Sprint Spectrum to put up that tower you were just talking about. And the planning board at that time turned it down because it would spoil the view of West Millbury. Since that time, there have been two solar farms within probably 500 yards in either direction of where this tower is going. One of them used up a field where we used to plant corn for our cows. There was no objection to that, but there was an objection to a single pole up in here because of the scenic beauty. Solar farms are on a scenic beauty, to my estimation, and they use up a lot of farm, excuse me, a lot of farmland. If this, if this doesn't go through this time, well, I might mention, they were ready to build. In fact, I got insurance papers, liability insurance papers from Sprint for two or three or four, five years later, thinking they had put it up. But anyway, if it doesn't go up, we are gonna sell that property, and you can have houses up on the hill, probably multifamily, or whatever you wanna call them. So that's what you're up against, and that's what we're up against. We use that land for farmland, for mowing hay, for our cattle. And the reason the road is a little ziggy, because this company was good enough to not ruin all our hay fields and go right up straight. They made it so that they wouldn't prop, ruin, excuse me, ruin our property. So I have no objection to that road whatsoever. And Mr. Cormier, right there, he owns the building at the bottom of that hill, his feed store, and he has no problem with that road going by his feed store. So that's where I leave it. But, oh, and one last thing. If that original tower had gone up, the fire department never would've had to put up that pole that they put up because they would've put the signal devices on that tower. But this fire department had a run-of-wooden pole several hundred feet to the west of where this is going, south of where this is going.
Through the chair, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Those solar farms you talk about?
I'm sorry?
The solar farms that you're talking about?
One's on McGrath Road, and one's on the other side of West Main Street.
That's not on your property, correct?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to know who was...
One of them is on property that we rented the race corner on.
You used to rent the property that the owner of that property put the solar panels on? Well, that was my, you know, I wanted to know, was that your property?
No, we rented that. We rented...
You rented it off of the owner?
Exactly.
Okay.
But we planted it to Kocorn, and that, of course, disappeared.
Yep.
So I leave it at that.
Thank you.
I hope you can see why we'd like to have the tower.
I don't know, but we have to ask questions, too.
Is he asking me?
No, no.
No, you're all set.
You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Brian your dad?
Sorry?
Is Brian your dad?
He's my brother.
Oh, he's your brother?
Ooh.
Tell him, Brian.
That's public, too. I hope my brothers listen. Ah, you're gonna get it now.
There's one vote, Connor.
Timestamp. What's the timestamp?
Somebody in the back had a question?
Yep.
Thanks, I missed that. And I missed that, thank you.
How you doing? Paul Roach, 273 West Main Street, the abutter right on, right next to Rogers Farm Store. And I don't know how I feel about the tower itself. I mean, it is what it is, but I do know we have a major stormwater issue up there. I have a swale that's in my yard. All the water comes off the hill now, and the pipe under the road is just too small. And my yard fills up with water constantly. And I would think that's something that would need to be done. I know he's saying he's putting a driveway, it was really a road going up there. It shows a swale on the side of the road on that map that they were showing, and that's just gonna bring more water down. And all our yards flood out, my neighbor's and mine. And I've been up to the town to try to get them to do something about the culvert. I believe you came up there a couple of years back. And I know you had, Mr. Fairbanks had you do something with that culvert a long time ago. The neighbor blocked it off. I remember when they, they built the houses, you said, yes, I remember. You were the one talking, saying you helped open that up, that swale in my yard.
I can't read, I can't remember now, but...
I also don't know who is supposed to be cleaning out that swale that's in my yard. I can't tell if I'm allowed to touch that or not, but it has filled in over the years. I've been up there 20 years, and it's just not low enough now to get the water out. And over at the, the neighbor has been filling in his land slowly, which is now able to make the water come easier over into my yard. And he's piling huge piles of snow right on the property line now, which if the swale and the pipe were working correctly, it probably would be no problem. But I don't know how I get on the list to get that pipe fixed under the road. And I don't know if they should put a retention pond for that road they're gonna put up there instead of my yard acting as the retention pond. I mean, I get some, right now, that pipe is frozen solid, so once it's all melting, it's just gonna pile up in my yard. So I would just like that addressed before anything happens up there. As for the tower, I could go either way on it, doesn't matter. I don't wanna...
Whose yard is the swale on?
The swale's on my, my property.
273 West?
Yeah, and there's a stone wall actually on part of it, and some of the stones have fallen over into it. I picked up some of them, but there's a couple that are too big, you know, blocking it a little bit. And I asked Mr. Pearson one time if he could ask, I don't know if Rogers owns it now, or the Pearson still owns the property, but if they'd mind not coming so close because it's bringing more water on. But I don't know. I tried going the nice route and asking, so I don't know if there's anything you could do.
Did you go to DPW?
Yeah, over the years, I've been going down there 15 years, they come up, all it's, the water's running, but once we get, you know, we get rain real bad now, so it just, we get like two inches every time it rains down.
If that swale's filling in, then that should be cleaned out.
Yeah, well...
See, the trouble is, I don't know whether that swale belongs to you or belongs to the town.
Yeah, that's the main problem.
You need to go read your deed.
Who's responsible for maintaining it?
Read your deed. Go into the registry and read the deed. And see if it makes note of an exemption for the swale to the town. If it does, go down to the town and tell them to clean it out.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, right.
Because they are supposed to take care of it. It's that simple.
I don't think it's as simple as you're making it, but...
Well, probably not.
Conservation might call that a stream, and I can't dig it out.
What's that?
Conservation might call that a temporary stream, and I can't touch it.
I don't think conservation is gonna stop you from correcting something that has been filling in.
Yeah.
Correcting water flow.
Which is what the problem would be. And if they did, then they would assume the liability of anything that, flooding that happened because they said, no, I don't think they're gonna do that either. All right, they want this to flow. Everybody wants the water to flow.
All right, so if I dig it out, but what about the pipe? The pipe's not big enough. And low enough.
And what?
The pipe going under the road isn't big enough to take all the water. And you know how we get a lot of rain nowadays?
Yeah, well, the road belongs to the town, so you're gonna have to talk to the town about that.
All right, I noticed they've been doing a lot in town, a lot of them over, but how do I get on that list? I've been coming down for 15 years.
DPW.
Email.
You gotta go to talk to that guy and see where he can do a plan.
All right. So what about this road that they're gonna be doing? Is that, wouldn't you think that's gonna bring more water down?
No, it's gonna be pervious. It's gonna let the water through, it's not gonna change the water flow.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be paved. That's not gonna affect it, in my opinion.
StanTech made some comment to that effect about the road runoff. The driveway runoff, whatever you wanna call it. And I don't think, it's what we got tonight from StanTech, that was one of the comments that there was no description as to how much water was gonna run and where it was gonna go. And that was one of the comments from StanTech, correct?
It's a gravel road, it's not gonna change.
Yeah, through the chair, StanTech did...
Let me explain something. A 12% gravel road ain't gonna exist.
Oh, it'll wash out. It'll wash out for sure.
Oh, it's gonna wash out, big time.
So what are you telling me, not to come up? You're guaranteeing no more water's gonna come down that road? It's not gonna make it easier for the water to come down the road?
Nope.
We can't guarantee that.
Wouldn't say that.
Well, that's what we have to correct before this goes forward.
If I could comment on that? Your requirements are very clear. We can't...
We can't create more stormwater runoff. I don't take any responsibility for what's there now, but we design it with gravel. We're actually a very de minimis amount of impervious surface. But by asking us to make it a road instead of a driveway...
Not a road.
You know, one of the things that StanTech said is put millings in instead of gravel. And that's more impervious surface that's gonna create more stormwater runoff. So it's gonna create existing problems worse. We design it in such a way, and I knew, I know we need to comply with your stormwater management regulations, but the whole process is designed to not create stormwater.
Now, I'm not against the road going up there at all. The slopes are just not acceptable. They're not, they're not gonna be able to be maintainable. This guy's gonna have a mess in short order because of the way you designed the roadwork getting up there. Look at it again, please.
I, I respectfully disagree because if we were to create switchbacks, there'd be way more invasion on the ground, require more stormwater...
And you can't get up there, is what you're saying, with a reasonable trail.
I, we, our engineers start to get concerned at over 15%. This is well under 15%.
Good for them.
And we built them, the site that we keep talking about, Asheville, Mass, had a slope of 80...
Have them look at Millbury and lower their standards a little and come up with a solution for this guy. Okay?
Like you said, we, we've designed it so that there's no additional stormwater runoff. I, I think by making more...
Well, that doesn't mean because I want the road slope changed that you're gonna be able to run, have the runoff either, you know? What are you saying?
Certainly look at it.
Make a comment, Mitch.
Yes, sir. You certainly may.
Just a comment to the gentleman that just came up. He mentioned it, touched on it. Wasn't sure if it's made clear, but in the report on the water, the stormwater management, pre-development conditions and post-development, there's no change. So the, the project wouldn't have any additional runoff or mitigate. So there's literally no change. So the values on there are the same. So just wanted to make sure you knew that.
But you're worried about the channel of water being diverted because of gravel road?
Yeah. But it's a permeable surface, too, but, okay.
And I'm also gonna qualify that. That's in engineering theory.
Yeah.
Practicality isn't always engineering theory. I mean, hell, we got them all up here. Prove that. That traffic engineering board on that mall up there is a classic failure. Anyway, I've said.
Anybody else?
I have just a question.
You gotta come up.
Come up, though.
Several of the other towns that have had...
Name and address.
Sandra Palmquist, 263 West Main. Their towers have been stipulated that they have a lease in place for a cell provider before the building permit is issued. In other words, you won't just have a tower standing there with no services on it, which is something that could happen. And I don't know if the board would be, you know, privy to doing something like that.
Yeah, they didn't even say whether there was some, somebody already interested.
Yeah, I mean, do you have executed leases for...
The answer to the question, the answer to the first statement is yes, we would agree to that condition. We don't have any commitments yet. And part of the problem is, is that we don't know when we can build it with all the issues that we have to go with, both state, local, and federal. But we don't intend to build it and we won't build it because it doesn't make economic sense until we have an anchor tenant. So that condition, if they wanted to write it in, would be perfectly amenable to it because we don't intend to do it anyways.
Because most of the other towns that I've read have that stipulation.
Makes sense.
We, we don't build spec towers, but we do the requisite due diligence and infrastructure work. But, and, and we've talked to people. We just don't have a signature commitment because, and, and we know, people tried to do something here 20 years ago. The, the topography hasn't changed. Only thing that's changed in Millbury is more iPhones have been sold. So, you know, we, we certainly agree to that condition.
I just know that a lot of people in town think that this is a cell tower with cell service that's going up. And right now it's not. It's a tower that you can put an antenna on if you can entice somebody to lease the space. That's different.
We certainly agree to that.
Thank you. That's it?
Thank you.
You cater more to the internet providers of the world and stuff versus the voice?
The world is going towards data and less voice. If you called my kid today, she wouldn't answer her phone. She would text back and say, what do you want?
Yeah, I hear ya.
Right. And, and there are, some of the major providers like Verizon and T-Mobile are actually providing a data-only service, an internet access service independent of free even home use. So the technology is going in that direction. But we build what, an agnostic structure. We build a, a structure to make sure we have the structural integrity, the foundation, the height to accommodate. The technology doesn't matter to us.
Through the chair?
Yes, Fred.
I'm reading some of the comments here from StanTech Engineering. And they're concerned with the drainage off that road. They're also saying that that's gonna create 17,509 square feet of impervious area. We recommend DE address provisions to confirm the annual recharge from the post-development approximate pre-development conditions. Proposed drainage plan in Appendix F post-development hydraulic analysis identified one point of interest, McGrath Road. Based on our review, the proposed gravel access road drainage swale will intercept the stormwater runoff from the east side of the site and will flow down into the parking lot of the existing farm supply building, garage, and parking area. If you're gonna address that, I mean...
Yeah.
No, they're, they're doing it. They gotta wait, wait till I get it back from...
I'm gonna tell you, we, we just got the StanTech...
I know, I just got it tonight, too, and I'm sure you just got it yesterday.
I think, quite frankly, I agree with this gentleman. It's a gravel driveway. It's no more impervious surface. And, and I think that's our engineer's position. I think it might be appropriate for our engineers to communicate directly with StanTech and come up with, and, and show it to their satisfaction. I have no issue with what StanTech said. I think they are over-designing it and looking at it similar to other people as it's a public road. And it's not. It's a, it's an access driveway. And, but I, I, I 100% respect your stormwater management regulations. We have to comply with zero runoff. And, and we certainly think we've done that, but we need to satisfy StanTech to that regard.
Well, I wish you would stop calling it a driveway. I really do. It's not a driveway.
I'll call it a path. What you're, what you're not gonna hear me say is call it a road because it's not...
It's an access road, no matter how you say it.
This is so different than any other facility that you've permitted because it's an unmanned facility.
I understand that. I, I understand that. You still gotta get to it.
Which is why we designed an access driveway to, to get there. Once it's built, no one goes up there.
All right, well, the semantics, I get the, I get the fact that when you call it a driveway, then it doesn't have to apply with the other regulations.
Yeah, how, how does the propane get there?
What's that?
How does the propane get there?
They carry it up there on their backs.
Camel?
It's only for a generator.
Yeah, it, it's only for a small generator. It can be put on the back of a four-wheel drive vehicle. It, I'm gonna tell you, we built tens of thousands of these similar facilities...
I wanna see this cement truck.
With less access than this. You know, this is good for us because we don't have to bulldoze trees down to take through the woods and respect the, the farm use. You know, it's minimal impact to the farm. It's minimal impact to the environment. You know, these type of issues rarely come up in our world because really all we're concerned about is getting a concrete truck up there and getting a tower up there. And if they have to...
Crane.
They'll, they'll, and a crane up there. But cranes, you know, go in, in these type of places all the time. The tower might get dragged up behind a backhoe. It, it, I don't need to get a, an 18-wheeler up there. I just need to figure out a way. And our engineers and our construction crews have been very good in dealing in way more rural and steep and inaccessible places because, you know, it's really just a, a construction issue. It's no different than the utility company putting poles across, you know, Millbury.
Yeah, but the poles don't have your propane tanks and can catch on fire.
Thousands of feet from the public right away.
Different. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing, March 10th, 2025, at 7:00.
Second?
Your motion has been seconded. Any further discussion?
See what you can do.
None. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Thank you.
We'll see ya.
Yep. And we'll continue to work with Connor, who's been very, great to work with.
StanTech, too. See, if you guys can come up with a solution.
So, all right, moving on. Jesus, what time is it? Zoning bylaw amendment makes use in the business, District 1. I'm thinking of this. Isn't this something we talked about, like...
We talked about it last, last meeting.
We discussed it. We didn't have a public hearing.
Right.
To have a public hearing.
Is this the public hearing tonight?
Yeah.
No, we discussed it last week.
In accordance with the provisions in Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General...
Hold on a minute, Bruce. Can you?
Terry, you gotta go out in the hallway.
Sorry.
Please, thank you. Thank you very much.
Just so we can continue the meeting.
Thank you. Go ahead, okay. Thank you, Bruce.
I'll tell my father yourself hello.
Well, I know that. I know, he looks old, doesn't he? He looks old.
He looks good.
Oh, I don't know about that.
In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General laws, Millbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing, 7:00 PM on Monday, February 24th, 2025, in a large conference room at the Millbury Municipal Office Building at 127 Elm Street, Millbury, Mass, on proposed amendments to the zone, the Millbury zoning bylaw. The proposed amendment seeks to add mixed use as an allowable use in Business 1 zoning district and adds an associated definition. The text of the proposed amendment is available for review in the Planning Department via appointment during normal business hours and online at the Planning Board's website, Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place specified above. Richard Goswin, Chairman.
So through the chair, if I, if I might summarize. This is something the boards discussed previously, is the board had reviewed this and submitted the zoning amendment proposal. And now we're coming back today with the public hearing itself for the zoning amendment proposal. And again, this is to add mixed use as a, an allowed use by a special permit in the Business 1 district. Part of the impetus or thought, reasoning behind this was, one, there's a lot of existing mixed-use buildings in downtown Millbury, which is where the Business 1 district is generally located. Mixed use, generally speaking, is ground floor commercial with resident or dwelling units on the upper stories. So you can think of a few examples of that in downtown Millbury, like the Matt the Buzzer Building or Ray the Barbershop Building. Also looking for somewhat in mind with the redevelopment of the old Fire Department building. Not sure exactly what that use might be, but potentially a conversion of that building for mixed use is one of the many potential options for, for what may come of that building. The proposed amendment would add a, add mixed use as an allowable special permit use to Article, to Section 26.21 in the zoning bylaws and would add a corresponding definition in Article 5. That's the end of the zoning bylaws. Mixed use development to be a development characterized by two or more distinct uses containing a mixed multifamily residential together with commercial, civic, or other non-residential uses that are physically integrated into a compatible way within a single building. Also note that in the proposed special use, the mixed use would only, or sorry, special permit, the mixed use would only be allowed on the main streets in the Business 1 district. So that's like Canal Street, Elm Street, Main Street, and South Main Street. Would not be allowed on some of the, the side streets, like I think Church Street and School Street, those kind of smaller roads that are also in the Business 1. So only on the main roads.
Don't think this is, I think this is almost like a no-brainer. We almost got it built like that anyway, so...
Yeah, it is, but I have one question. Did I notice in there it said gas station?
No.
No.
I saw, I saw a service station.
Service station.
Which would be a repair station.
Yeah. I don't think that's pretty...
Repair.
That, that's, yes, that is a, an allowed use by special permit currently in the Business 1 district.
Yeah, but now you wanna make a combination.
No, so that, we're not, that's not being touched at all. If you're looking at the memo that I provided, it would just be the addition of 26, Section 26.21, Number 8. And it would be, be to allow mixed use developments, so nothing to do with the 26.21, Number 2, which is to allow motor vehicle service stations.
Well, that's what I saw, a service station. And I said, what?
That was already there.
Pardon?
It was already there. Yeah, it was, it's already in, in the bylaw.
And that's something that might be removed?
The, I don't think the boards currently or has discussed that, but...
No, maybe I jumped ahead a little bit.
Yeah, but that service station thing is by special permit only, right?
It is by special permit only.
They ain't gonna, no service station is going in there.
Not with a house above it.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, you know, it's like, I wouldn't worry about it.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, certainly I think motor, when you think of what you want cited in your downtown, a lot of people maybe would not want a motor vehicle service station. So it's something that the board could look at if they wanna, you know, in the future look at what uses are allowed where, but that's not being contemplated with this amendment tonight.
So that's not set in stone, then? Somebody comes in and says, I wanna put a service station there?
Right. Special permit, which is discretionary.
Okay. Thank you. I pick up these little tidbits here and there, you know?
I don't see any hands. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, you may. You were gonna make it short, though. I saw, okay.
You know I'm gonna, you know, I always say, all right. Terry Burke-Dawson, 20 C. Little Terrace. I'm looking up, which, which book are you referring to?
Zoning bylaws.
The zoning?
Mm-hmm.
26.21?
That's it, yep.
That says industrial one and industrial two special permit uses? You got it wrong?
If, yeah, if it's the wrong section being referred to, then it should be 27.21.
What, what number are you talking about? 27 point...
Yeah, sorry, through the chair, I, I think you may have an older... Yeah, sorry, through the chair, I think you may have an older version of the bylaws.
Okay, I need a new book. Okay, 26.21, 26, 26.
So in your book, it's probably.
You're right. This, this thing is outdated. Okay, all right. But I'm glad we talked. Okay. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about is, please be specific about the streets you want to have listed for this dual use. And if there's a limit, you just can't say Main Street because North Main Street goes all the way down to 146. So can you, can you be more specific about the streets and the addresses on the streets?
So, through the chair, I just, it's only within the confines of the business one district, so it is, it is limited to Canal Street, Elm Street, Main Street, and South Main Street, but only where those exist in the business one district, so it would not.
Can that be identified with the address?
Uh, yeah, that, that's not typically how, that's why you have a zoning map, so you know exactly where in, where the business one district is and which parcels are included in it.
So you have Main Street included in there, you said South Main Street, is Main Street as well?
Yep, Canal Street, Elm Street, Main Street, and South Main Street.
Can I ask a question on the North Main Street?
Yes, but I don't think I know the answer you're gonna ask.
Well, I saw a sign that it's called Main Street now. It's no longer called North Main Street until you get up to 146, where it branches off.
Yeah, the garage.
So when it branches off, I believe that's now called North Main Street Extension, going up towards the Marijuana Store.
Okay. So what about the North Main Street that used to be from Martin Street on? Is that just Main Street now?
Main Street was from South Main to the Union, and then North Main straddled from there.
Right, to Canal, and then it was North Main from there.
I just saw a sign that said Main Street at Martin Street. So.
Maybe they forgot the end? I don't know.
I'm not to be, I'm not sure I know that answer tonight, but I can try to look into it. I've seen it go both ways between Main Street and North Main Street, kind of referred to as the same way.
So the police department say it is because they're the official names of the streets.
Yeah. Sorry?
Ask the police department, they officially name the streets.
They like to confuse us. Look at, look what they did to Ballard Street. Went from Ballard Street to Milbury Street to Ballard Street to Milbury Street, now it's Ballard Street again.
Thank you.
Good talk, Terry.
Where did we go?
I made a motion to close the public hearing. I think Bruce seconded it.
I didn't get a chance, but I seconded that.
Okay, we got a motion, it's been seconded. Further discussion on this particular item, I don't think, whatever.
All in favor?
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none? That's unanimous.
Motion to recommend the proposed zoning bylaw amendment as outlined in the planning staff memo dated January 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Uh, we got a motion, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Through the chair, I have a question.
You certainly go ahead.
On this particular issue, hypothetically, if you take and put the MBTA, or that's the area you designate, or MBTA, that kills this, correct?
No. I, through the chair, no, I don't think so. I, I don't.
Not I think so, it does, no.
Well, I'm maybe a little unclear on the question, but if this, I don't think the MBTA district is being proposed to be in the, in this location, but if it were, the special permit used to allow mixed use is still allowed, same with the motor vehicle service station. MBTA just allows multifamily by right. So if someone wanted to do a mixed use building, they could still do that, they would just need to get a special permit from this board.
Okay, so it won't tangle up?
Okay. Did we vote on this yet?
Not yet.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? There are none, that's unanimous. Now we got another zoning amendment.
Another public hearing.
Yes. In accordance with the provisions of chapter 40A, section five of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Milbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, February 24th, 2025, in a large conference room at the Milbury Municipal Office at 127 Elm Street, Milbury, Massachusetts. On proposed amendments to the Milbury zoning bylaw, the proposed amendment seeks to format, renumber, and make spelling and grammatic, grammatic corrections to existing bylaws. No substantive changes to the zoning bylaws are proposed. The text of the proposed zoning amendment is available for review in the Planning Department via appointment during the normal business hours and online at the Planning Board's Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place specified above. Richard Goslin, Chairman.
Okay, this is just simply fixing spelling and grammatical errors.
Grammatic, really. Right, just grammatic.
It's not changing any of the real text or the meaning of it at all. So I'm not sure we need a lengthy discussion on this one.
I don't think so.
I don't think so, yeah.
It's Ken.
Quick.
Go ahead.
What? Okay, go ahead. This I gotta hear.
There's not enough parking.
I told you it was gonna be quick. Terry Burke-Dawson, 20th Hill Terrace. Both of these things that you're talking about right now, these zoning bylaw amendments, you're gonna bring that up before the town, at the town meeting? Okay, so that you're just endorsing these, these are things that you're gonna do and endorse them at the town meeting? Thank you.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Uh, we're gonna motion to close, and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none? All in. I need another motion.
Motion. Motion to recommend the proposed zoning bylaw amendment as outlined in the planning staff memo dated January 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none? That's unanimous. Okay, unfortunately, I need to take a couple minute recess, so.
All right.
Can you knock us off for a couple of minutes? Sorry.
Get everybody back here. No.
We're all back.
We're all back.
We're back.
Okay, on the business tonight, we got the House and Milbury Housing Production Plan.
We already did.
MBTA.
MBTA.
Oh, yeah, we did that earlier.
Yep.
Yeah.
That means I'm gonna be get out a little sooner than I thought.
Maybe.
Okay, well, discussion on the MBTA Community Zoning Amendment, our favorite topic.
Yeah, through the chair, it's all of our favorite topics at this point, I think. Yeah, I think this is a continuation of the discussion we've had for the last couple meetings. Basically, looking to see if the board is interested in submitting a zoning amendment for this upcoming town meeting. The deadline for zoning article submissions is essentially, for this board, it's tonight.
Yep.
So, if you would like to submit something, kind of looking for that.
The only thing we've got to submit is what you've shown us today, which disturbs me.
So, yeah.
I believe Steve had sent three things out to you last time, last time, to try to send to the board, the selectmen and everything else, so that we could have an open discussion on it, on other areas that potentially could fit the bill. It leaves me in a very bad spot, because I'm not in a position to vote positively for this, because there were other options, and other options may have been better. Steve, you would, quickly, because it's late.
Well, so, could I maybe just preface that a little bit?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, so, certainly, there are other locations that could be looked at. We had put together four, I'll call them sub-areas, the Canal Howe Ave area, the River Street, West Street, 146 in Bramenville. For this board's consideration and the Board of Selectmen's consideration, been working with Barrett Planning Group for the last couple months on reviewing those and doing the compliance model and mapping for those. We did get, Mr. Sterns did present a few additional options at the last meeting two weeks ago. We did not have enough time to model those and map those. Certainly, the board came...
Ultimately, I get that, but the problem is now, then I don't have enough time to make my decision before the deadline, so I'm gonna have to pass.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly, that's one of the board's options, is to do nothing.
Yeah.
I would say...
How about this, how about this? How about we say, yeah, and then, I don't know, he's got like eight different options. Well, we put the options out there, and they can vote for it, which one they want. That way, they can have a choice. Yeah, I know, it's a good idea.
Those options are all credible.
Yeah, I would maybe, that would give me a couple red flags, that approach, but...
Well, yeah, probably, but I'm just saying, you know, the people said, no, I want them to have their say, and by me forcing them to pick one, I'm not allowing them to have their say. So, I don't know, I'm struggling with this, to be honest with you, I don't know how to handle this.
Well, let me help you.
Uh-oh.
I'm gonna help you.
Okay.
I'm not gonna give a positive thing on anything that's got to do with the MBTA.
Well, I can't do that, I'm not gonna...
I'm telling you.
Okay.
You know how I feel about this.
Yeah, I know.
If this board wants to do it, put their name to it, and if any other board wants to do it and put their name to it, go for it, because I'm not putting my name on it. People have spoken, and I'm not pulling that gag on them, and it's a gag.
Okay.
And I don't like it.
Okay.
This, hold on a second.
Yeah, okay.
I thought, is this just an article thing that we're doing right now?
The, the, the discussion is whether or not to submit an article for the town meeting. So, right now, there is not an article on the town meeting warrant. The planning board and the Board of Selectmen, as well as the zoning board and citizens petition, are the ways that a zoning amendment can get on the town meeting warrant. So, that's, the discussion now is whether this board would like to put a zoning amendment on the town meeting warrant for the town to vote on.
For the people to vote for.
Yeah.
Okay, through the chair?
Yep, absolutely.
So, we technically could have four warrant articles. If the Board of Selectmen submitted one, we submitted one, the Board of Appeals submitted one, and the public submitted one.
Yeah, and I mean, you could have eight.
I'm just saying, then you have...
No, you're right, you're right.
Then you have the people have a choice.
You're absolutely right, you wanna put...
Not jamming anything down their throats, still up to them.
You wanna put four pictures up there on the screen?
Well, I'm not saying there would be four, because I'm sure the Board of Appeals...
They're gonna try to decide it?
Isn't gonna give one.
We spent all this time trying to decipher these things, or Connor has, and we've been looking at them. I don't know how you can expect town meeting to pick four, one of four different options in a half an hour, or an hour, or whatever.
I'm not saying there's gonna be four, I'm just saying there could be four.
Yeah, there could be eight, I mean, but the only ones that, a citizen can't put it on, if I'm correct.
Too late for a citizen.
They can't do it for two years, citizen petition.
No, through the chair, citizen, it's no, the two-year probation on repetitive zoning amendments doesn't apply if the planning board gave a positive recommendation, and that doesn't change whether the article came from a citizen's petition, or the planning board, or whoever.
But the deadline has passed for citizens, right? For special, for the annual?
Yes, yes.
I don't think so.
End of the month, Valentine's Day.
Yeah, my understanding is this citizen's petition's deadline has passed, but the Board of Selectmen are closing the warrant tomorrow night at their meeting.
So, if we do nothing, the Board of Selectmen could put it on you?
Correct.
Right. So, now, you're giving the town one option.
Well, what do you think they're gonna get?
Well, they're gonna, the Board of Selectmen are just gonna say, yeah, we agree with the planning board, and they're gonna get one option.
Well, what's the option gonna be?
We don't know.
Oh, well, that's... You have to have an option to put on the warrant.
I understand that, that's why we're talking about it. We got four different things here, you know? And we gotta pick one, if you wanna give a positive. You don't have to do anything, but if you wanna give a positive recommendation, then you gotta pick one of these. You can't give a multiple choice.
I like that.
You like multiple choice?
Can the planning board give more than one option?
I can do it, none of the above.
I, through the chair, yes, I don't see why you couldn't...
How would they decipher that, though, seriously?
I do think to Fran's point, I could see that causing some confusion, or some, whatever. I think maybe providing less options at town meeting might make the process clearer for folks, but that's...
Well, look at how long we've been playing with these things. You think you're gonna go before town meeting, and we say, hey, we got three, four different things, pick one!
I think that could be challenging, yeah.
Uh, challenging? No, oh, boy. But, whatever, I don't know. Does Steve have something to... So, Steve, you're gonna be reviewing what you emailed us? Is that what you're doing?
As quickly as possible, going through it.
Right, five minutes.
But we don't have any information on it, to say what...
Well...
You're gonna get the information right now. Yeah, but you don't know what, if Connor had a chance to look at it, what's available as far as the parcels, you know, so you have a 58 caposso, but only 30 of it is good for whatever. You know all that information?
He named all the parcels.
I've gone through it all, and it has to be reviewed. So, he, let me, Steve Sterns, 12 Thomas Road. One thing that I think is a big problem, not only for this board, but for the Board of Selectmen, we're rushing to a deadline that we're self-imposing for the special town meeting. We should have a special, for an annual town meeting, we should have a special town meeting, so we have the opportunity to do this right, and look at and review options. That's my opinion. We're trying to do this too quickly, and I know the Board of Selectmen said, if you don't act tonight, they're gonna act tomorrow night. I think that's wrong. We're rushing to something that we don't even know what the requirements are at this point. But, if Rich wants, I'll go through the options as quickly as possible, so you can look at them, maybe that'll give you some clarity and direction.
Yeah, just go through them as quick as you can, because it's getting real late.
Right, so...
Sorry. I mean, we know the four that Connor and Judy Barrett have proposed, so we don't need to see those again, right?
I'll just go through them quickly, very quickly, share. All right. It's not showing up quite, hold on one second. Okay. So, the first option, which is the one that is Howe Ave and Milbury Ave, you can see the yellow area that encompasses most of the downtown, that's the environmental population, so that's a sensitive area, that's for people who are of 60% of lesser of AMI. The only modifications I made to this were the corner of Howe Ave and Canal Street, to include those lots, because it didn't look right without them, and the same on Rivellin Street, to include those lots. The rest of it is exactly the same as what you've seen before. My concern with this is this could be viewed as paper compliance, and it could be thrown out by the state, okay? Second option is the 146 South that we looked at, and the option that was presented was shy of 50 acres. So, I added a few lots on the north, so there's five lots on that little street that's coming out in the north, and then a couple of the lots on the Sutton side of this that were excluded, so that brings us to 53.8 acres, okay? And what we could do, I know there's wetlands, what you see in the green on all of these is wetlands, so that would have to be accounted for. So, to get to this being the 50 acres of developable land, we could push the rear line of this out a little bit to accommodate, to get to 50 acres. Next option is on West Main Street, Bramenville, added a few parcels to this, doesn't materially change it all that much, but gives us a little more acreage, which is 30.1952 acres, so it's short, so this one couldn't stand alone as the zone, we could look at adding more acreage there. Option four is exactly the same as what Connor and Judy Barrett presented on River Street. That one also could be looked at paper compliance as well, because it's all businesses, and I think we want to be sensitive to putting this on top of our small local businesses and potentially eliminating them. I know one of the selectmen had said businesses aren't gonna go anywhere, same as the Howe Ave. Well, we've seen IBM leave Milbury, there's other businesses, if you're offered enough money, you'll relocate. All right. Option five, which I presented last time, is unchanged, which is on the east side of Rivellin Street, which is, this is one, I'm not endorsing any of these, these are just for discussion. That one is 56 acres, almost 57 acres, has very little wetlands, has a lot of street fundage on Rivellin Street. In Grafton, which is on the right-hand side of the screen, is Lordville condominiums, so that's already a multi-family development that exists there, so I think this is a good option. The next option, option six, which is Rivellin Street on the west side, Silver Fox Drive, MacArthur Drive, encompass this whole area. You'll see in the middle, there's a lot of wetlands there, so that's why the MacArthur Drive was added by another person that was consulted on this. It's a good area, it may get ruled out because of the wetlands and access. Next one is the area, I don't know whether it's Grafton Road or Grafton Street, 122. North of that, there's an area that's north of the railroad tracks, that's not accessible from Milbury, well, technically, it's still in Milbury, but you have to go through Worcester or Grafton to get there, so I think that's a good area. And then, we've got areas just north of Grafton Road that encompass some office buildings now, I think it's a good area, maybe give a village-type look to it, and develop Grafton Road a little bit more. That one is 81 acres, so there's certainly enough acreage there, even with the wetlands. There are two parcels in there, one is town in Milbury, and the other is unknown, so we're not getting tax revenue for that, so I think that's, if we could pick those up and encompass those areas, that would be good. The next one, option eight, is the mall property, and this is included because malls are also including condominiums in them, and commercial. Our mall seems to be doing pretty well financially, there aren't a lot of empty stores, other malls in the area are having difficulty with that, so this is presented as a potential option, and that's 87.58 acres, so it certainly meets the requirements. The next option, option nine, was thrown in there, just because this was open land. Bruce and I had a brief conversation, one of these parcels has conservation restrictions on it, so it wouldn't work, but it's still 66.6244 acres. I know that's maybe a little hard to see, because it blends in with the conservation, with the green crosshatching, but that's another viable area. The email that I sent you earlier today has the breakdown of all of the parcels, all of the acreage, according to the assessors' data, so we know what these parcels are, and if we had to exclude a couple to meet the requirements, to meet the minimum 50, we have that information to do. So, I don't know if any of these resonate with any of you, I can certainly flip back to them, if you want to look at them in a little more detail.
Through the chair?
Fran.
Well, if I was to pick anything, I'd either pick Rivellin Street or 122, it's closer to MBTA and Grafton.
Mm-hmm.
It's certainly not in downtown Milbury. It shouldn't affect the traffic much in downtown Milbury, just because of where the location is, right there on 122. That would be one option. Those would be two options. The other one, 146. Major highway. Not a lot of congestion there, you know? That's my opinion.
146 needs something else with it, though, it's not big.
Yeah, it's got the, what's it, West Main Street.
You could take 146 and add a little bit to the back of it, to get to the 50 acres, and then it could stand alone.
Right, or you can add a little back to the back of it, which is what, Road Street?
Well, it doesn't even have to go that far, you could probably add 10, 20 feet to the backside of it, the whole length, and you'd get the acreage you need, without adding addition.
So, I don't, through the chair, I don't know that you could just extend the overlay district into another parcel, and not have that parcel entirely be within the overlay district, and have that parcel count.
Why, we have other parcels in town that have different zones in them?
It's an allowed zoning practice, but I'm not sure that EO, HLC would count that towards their approval of our district.
Well, we should know that answer.
So, do it again, that's all. Gets rejected, you just do it again, right?
What do other people think on the board?
I like 146 in Bramenville.
I like 146, and either Bramenville or the Howe Ave Canal Street, either one of those two.
Bramenville's halfway there already, well, approved-wise.
Yep. I can tell you that one of the selectmen said at their meeting, they were concerned about using the Bramenville District, because they felt that that had already gone through enough with the, I don't remember the name of the project, the Steel Craft Building, and what's going to...
Singletary Arms.
Singletary Arms, they were concerned how that would be perceived by the people in that area, and voting on that. Whether that's a valid concern or not, I don't know.
I have a question.
Tony, what do you have?
Say, say we do put forward a positive recommendation on an area, and it goes to town article and gets back, are there, is it up for change? Can we change it at that point, decline, like, what does that look like?
Yeah, have a public hearing, so you could.
Yeah, so, through the chair, if the planning board or the Board of Selectmen puts forward an article, there will still need to be a planning board public hearing, so we'd kind of have, we'd have an opportunity to discuss it again before town meeting. So, at the public hearing, you would give a recommendation, that recommendation gets delivered to town meeting, and then town meeting would vote on it, and it gets sent to the Attorney General's Office and HLC for both of their approvals.
Say it gets declined or not approved, what happens then?
If the, if the town meeting doesn't approve it, it's dead. If town meeting approves it, it goes to the Attorney General and Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, they're both gonna separately review it. I mean, potentially, they both could approve it, I would say we would probably want to avoid a situation where the Attorney General approves it, for it being a valid zoning district, but then have HLC not approve it for being an MBTA district. So, that's part of why we're doing this compliance modeling, to make sure that whatever district we do put forward is going to meet the requirements of the MBTA law.
Okay, this is my problem. See what he just said? One can approve it, one can not approve it. They don't even have their act together. They have no idea what they're doing in Boston, no, no idea. They still haven't had public hearings on any of this stuff, which the Supreme Court told them to do, but what do they do? Yeah, here's a piece of paper, sign it, follow this, but it's not legal.
So, both of the H, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and the Attorney General have to approve it.
Right.
If either one rejects it, it's out of compliance, and it would probably come back to the town to remedy, and in some way.
Which is the craziest thing, that's what I'm saying. They need to pick one of them agencies.
Well, that's, that's the way they set it up, and there are communities that have approved the zoning amendments, and it's been a year, and they still don't have a decision from Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities and the Attorney General.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's also communities that have asked for an exception.
Yes. So, the other point that I'll bring up is, which doesn't really, probably relate to this discussion, is the auditor has said this is an unfunded mandate, which means the state should fund it, and we don't have to really comply, and one of the things that I will be bringing up tomorrow night to the Board of Selectmen, which I've already talked to them about, is we should be filing a petition with the Supreme Court, SJC, to have them fund everything we're spending to do this, and everything that's gonna cost the town. Every community should be doing that. So, there's a lot of open issues still on this, the court cases and everything else.
Well, they have to make up their mind what they want.
Who's "they"?
The state.
Well, they don't know, and...
Well, I know they don't know, so how's we supposed to know?
But, the issue tonight is deciding, do we want to pick an option, do you want to present something forward, or do you want to do nothing and let the Board of Selectmen do what they're gonna do?
Can I ask Connor a question?
Oh, yeah.
So, let's say we decide to do nothing tonight, and the select board puts forth an action plan to submit for a warrant. If the town votes that down, does that still count as a supported... Compliance.
Yeah, no, no. So, even if this board or the Board of Selectmen puts forward an amendment, it still has to be passed by town meeting, so if town meeting doesn't pass it, then the town is still out of compliance.
Okay, but you said we had different options, because we supported it, but the town failed it, that's where I'm going. Am I wrong here, misunderstanding something?
Um, yeah, I'm not...
I don't know.
I guess, in terms of options, there, we're looking at which location for the district the board may want to consider submitting. There are different options, you know, we had talked about the four areas that this board and the Board of Selectmen are looking at, Mr. Sterns has also put forward a few other options. I think there's multiple, there's many combinations of parcels across town that could be put forward, but I think it's, the conversation tonight is really narrowing down which parcels or which areas you might want to move forward with.
Through the chair, going to Paul's point, you could have four warrant articles.
Yeah.
Correct, you were right, you could have four warrant articles.
That would, good.
Through the chair, going to Paul's point, you could have four warrant articles.
I, yeah.
Correct. You were right. You could have four warrant articles.
That would, could.
Require four public hearings and--
And, and we're asking to, to say, okay, we like this, we're not even having a public hearing. I, I don't get it. I don't get it.
Well, I mean, we still will have a public hearing, but at some point, a decision has to be made about what article, what zoning to put forward. So that's where we're at now.
Action plan, not a--
Where we're at now.
Well, it's not. The action thing is--
Yeah, Brian's up there.
Well, it's already been submitted.
Okay, Brian, you really want to add to this mix?
Yeah, good, good call, Rich. Glad for punishment, apparently, case of the Mondays. Brian, or Jackie Drive, I just wanted to voice my opinion on the idea of, of multiple options. And, and while I do agree, you know, do I think eight options presented at Town Meeting is for the best? No, I think that's going to be a lot, and there's going to be, I, I think that's just too much. I do think that the idea of a potential warrant article that has two provides two options while not getting out of hand with an overabundance of options where we can talk through it as a town. Ultimately, you guys are going to make whatever decision you make today. I, I'm, all, all I'm going to say is that similarly to where you guys were last year, it's a very thankless position to be in here where, where as a board, as the Board of Selectmen and you guys are right now, but what you did last year, had to decide on whether or not you're going to put something in front of the town for us to vote on as a community, something that, you know, you guys have all, for the most part, been vocal on that you don't agree with. And, and I'll speak as myself individually. I, I disagree wholeheartedly with the entire, I give this whole MBTA thing, I think it's a gross overreach by the state, and I'm disappointed that, you know, things have gone the way they are where the court decisions essentially said they had the right to sue, but they got to go back to the well and, and make some change, allow public comment. They're not going to listen to a single word that you or, or I or anybody in the community made for public comment, in my opinion. But you guys still had to do the thankless job, which was putting that out in front of it for us to vote on as a group. And I hold none of you guys as, you know, being supporters of it because you did that. You guys were just doing your duty as elected officials to put it in front of us as townspeople to vote on. That's where I stand on it, and, you know, I'll say this, because again, I'm speaking for myself, that, if you guys do decide to vote in one of these, you know, maps for, to, to go onto the warrant, I will still be a vocal, I'll, I'll still be vocal tomorrow in our meeting on Board of Selectmen as providing another option for the Town Meeting despite whether or not that's, you know, some people think of the best interest or if, if that's going to be overkill. If that's any, if that's any measure of me standing beside you guys on this, in that, again, I don't think any of us pretty much out of either of our boards are really in favor of this. It's just a matter of doing our duty for the town. So I'll, I'll, I'll give you my word on that. Should you guys do put something forward, I'll still argue tomorrow that we put something else out for options. I'm not just going to throw my hands up and say, hey, Planning Board took care of it, our hands are free of this. I take ownership of this just as much as, you know, you guys do in terms of just, you know, our responsibilities in front of the town. Should you guys not do it, you know, I get it. That's your guys' opinion as a board. Again, we, we still are on common ground, which is our beliefs and opinions on the MBTA thing. It's just a question of whether or not, you know, the, the philosophies here of bringing it back now that we've heard from the Millen case. So that, that was it. I just kind of wanted to give you guys my two cents on this for, for here, for you guys' meetings.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Can I ask Brian a question, Rich?
What's that?
Can I ask Brian a question?
You can try. So, so yeah, still.
Brian, just to be clear, I know we're throwing out a lot of words on options and stuff. When you said two options, are you meaning two, two areas in one zoning article, or are you talking about multiple zoning articles?
Them article, two different map locations. So for example, if, if this board were to move forward with one forty-six in Bramenville, I would still tomorrow be arguing that the, our board, the Board of Selectmen, move forward with another area, same, same zoning, you know, the, the rules that go with it, the bylaws with it, just a separate location of, say, Canal and Howe.
So if multiple people put, if there's multiple articles, what happens if they all pass? Then we've got a hundred acres.
Well, I think, I think we dealt with this last year with MS four. So MS four, we had a contingency plan if it got voted down, which was a separate article that had us approve, you know, money from whatever the other one was that we ended up doing for it. So it, it's not unheard of. It just basically would be whichever, if the first one gets voted in, then the other one's not needed, or if that one gets voted down, then we go to the next article and decide on that one.
Thanks for the clarification. I think there was another hand up online. I don't know if it disappeared.
I don't see one.
No?
No.
In that situation, if you got two districts on one article--
Two areas, yeah.
What, what do you do? Pick A or B? I, I don't understand how, you got to have two articles.
No, I think what he's saying is they would, both of them would make up the article. So if you did, as it was presented last time, one forty-six and Bramenville would be one town warrant article.
That'd be one warrant.
On that as the, both areas as the total area.
Right.
Not individually.
That'll be one warrant. There won't be a, there won't be, I mean, one article. They won't be both on the same article.
That's what I understood Connor to say at the last--
You can't have them both on the same article. How are you going to do that?
No, you can't.
Yeah, so--
Two pieces for one, for one area, yes. But if you say I want to do one forty-six in Bramenville and I want to do Howe Ave and Canal Street, those are going to be two different articles.
Right. I think what we're saying is one forty-six in Bramenville, not Canal Street as another option.
Right, that can be on one, right.
So one forty-six in Bramenville could be one article--
Right, that can be one article.
Described separately, the same--
You want that cumulative, the minimum of fifty acres.
Unless you chose, you know, another area that was one place that fit the bill.
Right. Well, townspeople spoke on it. I'm, you know what I think.
I know what you think. I know what I think. That's why I want to just bring it through. I don't know whether we got enough votes to get anything going. Maybe we do.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to submit zoning amendment to Board of Selectmen for consideration of Route one forty-six and Canal Street Howe Ave. Second.
Okay. Now it's up to you, my friend, as to whether that passes or not, because--
And, sorry, just through the chair, just to make sure I'm clear on the, on the area you're motioning, this would be the Route one forty-six area on the Barrett Planning map.
Yep.
And the--
Canal Street Howe Ave.
The entirety of that district or, let me--
Well, we only need a section of it, right?
Yes. So, so I just want to make sure we're referring to the--
Otherwise, you're a hundred acres.
Hundred acres.
Just do the Canal Street left side.
So, yeah, through, through the chair, if you can see this, this is the, the map that, from the discussion from the Board of Selectmen's leading, meeting last, last couple of weeks ago, where it's the one forty-six area and a section of the Canal Howe Ave, where it's really mostly the parcels along Canal Street. So that's like Cortis Mills, nineteen Canal, CVS, Old Time Inn.
How much is just Howe Ave? With the mill buildings, uh?
With just Cortis Mills?
No, with all the mill buildings.
Howe Ave. The industrial area. Industrial area.
Where the Methadone Clinic and that is.
We did not model that specifically. We did look at, obviously, this is the entire area of the Canal Street Howe Ave, and then the area that we were asked to kind of separate out was these, were these Canal Street parcels.
If you give me a second, I can tell you how many acres it is.
So how big is the one forty-six again?
That's thirty-eight acres or thirty-nine acres.
Almost thirty-nine, I think.
Thirty-nine?
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
That's the developable area, right? Not the whole area?
Right.
Correct.
Thirty-nine point three.
The West Main Street portion of it or Bramenville portion of it would bring it to fifty or fifty-three or something of that nature.
The, this, this map that I'm showing here, that is the Route one forty-six and the portion of just the Canal Street area, that has a total of--
I don't see how that would fly.
Fifty-seven point nine acres.
That's perfect.
I don't see how that would fly. I really don't see how that, the state ain't that stupid. I don't see how that would fly.
Well, why don't we kick it back?
Why, why don't you think it would fly? I'm just curious, I don't--
Why? Well, I think the one forty-six part of it's good. It's the Canal Street part, they're going to ask you, why did you go from a bank, a blank piece of property with other available properties around it and cut off a little, or need to add a little ten-acre point down in the center of town?
So the, the gross area on the industrial area that you're talking about is nineteen point two seven acres, the whole area. And it looks like, there is no wetlands shown on the national wetlands inventory.
That's Canal Street, correct?
So nineteen point how many?
It's Howe Ave industrial.
Howe Ave. There is a river that runs back, yeah.
How big was one forty-six total?
I don't have--
Thirty-nine, I believe.
Thirty-eight point something.
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine point three.
Thirty-nine point three?
Is that the total area or the developable?
It's a developable area. But isn't there a river on Howe Ave on the backside behind Ray's True Value? No.
Doesn't show.
There was a conversation about that. It goes down by-- There was a conversation about that with the Canal--
Canal ran through there.
Canal, yeah, but there was a combination about Canal Street Apartments about that. The wetland goes through there.
Just over fifty-eight.
Right, between Window and-- Right, yeah. But it doesn't, it went right behind the old Ray's True Value. Yeah, and it looped into, right, yeah. I know we had conversation about that. So there is wetlands there, per se.
Because it's supposed to be able to keep developing in the future at some point. And that might be seen as not.
I, I will, I will say, I don't think that the state's necessarily looking for, like, undeveloped land. I, I think it's completely reasonable for the district to include parcels that have buildings on it, developments on it. I, I do think--
Because downtown, the one last year was downtown, it was all--
I remember reading something about industrial, industrial land.
Take old buildings all the time and redevelop them, redo them.
Yeah, when they come in and bulldoze everything downtown, that'll be fine.
Put up ten-story apartments.
It'll look real nice.
I don't know what the board wants to do.
So what was the motion now? I'm lost.
Well, I don't know, we got two, it's, it's up, it's up to Tony, really. I mean, these two agree on, on an area.
No, Bruce only seconded it.
No, we didn't vote anything.
Bruce only seconded, right.
And, and I think we were maybe still just trying to make sure we had the, we were all in agreement on what area we were voting on.
You're not going to get that.
So then we can't vote on anything. That's simple.
We don't have to. I just made the motion. If you don't want to vote on it, you don't have to. Brian's again.
Go ahead.
Brian.
But Brian's or Jackie Drive. Connor, I think it'd be a, a better way to specify, because I understand where your confusion was too, that there's one large fifty-plus acre area that we had looked at, which was called Howe, Howe Ave Canal Street. The one that I think Paul was referencing in conjunction with one forty-six, you had it labeled as, I want to say it was a canal, can, can you pull up the other, is this it? Yeah, the sub-area?
The, the one on the screen now is the one forty-six and then the portion of Canal Street. And then this one is the entirety of the Canal Howe.
And that one was fifty acres that you're showing right now around that or over?
Yep, fifty, fifty-one point six.
Yeah, so I, I would just, yeah, I know this is what you guys are trying to do, but just it's important that you guys specify that it's the other one, that's the smaller reduced area, so not, so we're not offering up, you know, ninety acres for, for these folks here at the state.
So we got two that are kind of agreeing on what to do.
So it, it sounded, it sounded to me like the, the board, or Paul, your motion was closer to looking at this one on the map here where it's the one forty-six area and this section of Canal Street?
No, Howe Ave.
Okay.
He was talking about the industrial--
The industrial part of Howe Ave.
So that, that's, I think it's fifty Howe Ave is this big--
Yeah, fifty Howe Ave, right.
So it would be one, one forty-six area plus fifty Howe Ave?
Yeah, well, that's what I was getting at, yeah.
Okay.
I'm just making a motion so we can get something done. If it doesn't fly, it doesn't fly. Somebody else make a motion.
Second.
I make a motion and take no action. Do I hear a second?
They act on the first one first.
Okay.
Okay.
What was the first one?
One forty-six and fifty Howe Ave.
All in favor of that area, say aye.
Aye.
No.
No. Okay, so Tony passed it. I guess that's going to be up to him. I wasn't, I wasn't gonna--
No, I'm not putting my knuckle--
Well, not in favor of any of them, but we got to give them something.
Then we don't do it, no we don't.
Then the town can make up their mind.
They already did, Paul.
I'm sure the Board of Selectmen are going to have one, so now they'll have two options. And it's, I'm sure it's not going to pass.
You're confusing this issue.
I'm not confusing it.
You want to have two options. Why don't we put all eight of them up there and say, yeah, pick one?
Eight. All right.
This is getting ridiculous.
Release of performance guarantee for Colton Road.
Well, what happened?
What happened is it got approved with--
He didn't say anything. Did you say something?
Yeah, yes, he did.
I did.
He approved it. It took three, three to two, so that means that it's going forward.
Huh?
How'd you miss that? He's sitting right next to you.
He whispers. He doesn't talk much, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
With this, with this vote and this going on--
Bad.
The town warrant, as you submitted and whatever the Board of Selectmen might do tomorrow, I want to be clear on the public hearing. Can that make any changes to this, or it's just a waste of the public's time to come?
So through the chair, because of the timing of the public hearing, will be, will likely be after the warrant has been signed, signed and posted. We wouldn't be able to, the, the board wouldn't be able to change the text of the article. You could make a recommendation from your public hearing to make a change on the Town Meeting floor. So you'd still be able to make a change on the Town Meeting floor, but the warrant article that's going to be, the article that's going to be on the warrant can't change.
Something could still be changed, modified, tweaked or whatever. Not written in stone.
So that we can all get home before we have to go to work tomorrow.
I think it stinks, to be honest with you.
The whole thing stinks, but--
Well, then why did you say, oh, well--
Colton Road--
I don't understand.
I want to get on the Colton Road extension, release.
I don't get it.
Apparently, they've done everything, they've signed off, they, all the bells, the whistles, right?
All the trash is gone. All the trash is gone.
Yeah, so if we can just approve this, then we can move on.
Make a motion to release the remaining funds held as performance guarantee for the Colton Road extension definitive subdivision so that an amount of zero remains in escrow.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion that's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, here in non-approval of the minutes of February tenth.
Motion to approve the minutes of February tenth, twenty twenty-five.